We call the regular May 14th, 2015, 7:04 PM. The Arundel Planning Board, the NLD Library. We'll start off with a roll call.
Marty Kane.
Bob.
John McKinnon.
Mitch Gannon.
Tom McCall.
Stan Sedgwick, Planner.
Marie Murphy, Secretary.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. We have approval of the minutes of April 2nd, 2015. And we have three pending applications. I'm sorry, say what? Okay. We have three pending applications. Item one is Parker Woods Drive Expansion, a private way application. Item number two is Goff Mill Brook Dam Removal, a conditional use pre-application. Item three is Cape Arundel Cottage Preserve, a site plan application. And we have a planners' report for general discussion and whatever report, a lot of things are upcoming.
Move to vote for the agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Discussion? Discussion, Marty?
Yes. If I recall from memory, today there was supposed to be a public hearing.
There was supposed to be a sidewalk.
No, a public hearing.
No, that... We all fit it, but the applicant chose not to.
No. One of the items on the agenda that we had already had the sidewalk coming.
Parker Woods. Public hearing.
I don't remember. Not that it's... Not that I just don't...
He's here.
There was someone that didn't get this.
Did we have you scheduled?
Yes.
Okay. We have him scheduled for a public hearing.
Yeah.
Thanks, Marty.
Well?
So...
Since we...
Did we advertise?
No. No.
Wasn't advertised previously.
Sorry, didn't know we had a public hearing on this day. We have a meeting on the 28th, but then they've already submitted their final drawings for the 28th. We can have the public hearing at that time. Would that be acceptable?
Well, the last meeting, they scheduled a public hearing. This meeting...
And unfortunately, it never got published, so we can't have the meeting because nobody was notified about it. Ted, Ted tells me that you were on the agenda for the 28th?
Yeah.
That we could definitely get it posted and have it done. We can still take a look at the items that are on here. But since you're on the agenda for the 28th, we can have the public hearing right before and make sure that everybody gets notified this time of year.
Yeah. And question, we have been ready to approve it tonight anyway?
No.
No?
No.
Because we just got the new drawings from Walsh today. And I haven't had a chance to go over them, but they just showed up today. So these are revised drawings, so I haven't got any more of those yet.
And there are a couple of items that we need to address anyway, so we wouldn't have been able to rule on the application today anyway. So I apologize for that. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda? Those opposed? It is unanimous. Going right at it, the very first item, Parker Woods. This is a proposal to spend, extend Parker Woods Drive 1,300 linear feet and make it...
Did you go over the minutes?
No.
Oh, no, I did not, thank you. Okay. You have the minutes, these are the minutes from...
April 2nd.
April 2nd. The executive session with the board of selectmen.
I move that we approve it as written. Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the minutes of the executive session with the board of selectmen on April 2nd. Any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes.
Recollection was that there was to be a statement or something that elects...
No actual statement.
We have applied that in the minutes of April 2nd, the regular minutes of April 2nd.
Yep, it's literally right in front of me.
It is now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good catch.
Okay. I'm fine.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Stay there.
Or in favor, one exception.
No, you dismissed yourself for...
Correct.
For butters.
Right. Now on to Parker Woods Drive Expansion, private way application. Proposal to extend Parker Woods Drive 1,300 linear feet and make improvements to the entire length of the private way to meet the construction standards for roads servicing three to seven residential lots on a 40.4 acre site located at 183 Downing Road, tax map 26, lots three and three C in the R4 Shoreland Overway and the NRC zoning district. Troy Parker is the owner and William Walsh, the third PE, is the owner's agent. And Mr. Parker is here today. Your agent here?
No, he's not.
Okay. I should put on my other pair of glasses so I can actually see out to the audience. There was notice. Evidently, your gravel investigation revealed that MDOT would require additional work on the road. It's already been done.
Or Mike cares about this. It's on the cover page. If you read the first cover page. From Walsh Engineering.
Okay.
Well, and I discussed it and put it in the, it's put in this letter which we'll see today. Basically says gravel sample was taken from several test pits, data civil analysis performed. Test results from RRW Gillespie and Saco show the sample met the requirement for MDOT subbase coarse gravel D at the time of construction. MDOT revised the standard specifications in 2004, reducing the allowable percent passing quarter inch sieve from 70 to 65 percent. Test sample had 69 percent passing quarter inch sieve. It's our opinion that because of the test sample had less than 3 percent passing the number 200, that it was in the middle of the department for the number 40 sieve and that the existing material is well-drained, gravelly sand gravel, which would determine as meeting the town's requirement for subbase coarse gravel. Essentially, the road was built with material that met MDOT type D gravel up until the latest spec, which is this 2014 spec. We noticed that the sieve analysis also shows that it's basically the aggregate size and not the fine size. So frankly speaking, being more concerned about too many fines than we'd be about the aggregate, the aggregate quarter inch concrete yield. So I really don't see... I would recommend to the board, even though that we require, we require MDOT gravel, MDOT D gravel for the base. And what's been built met that specification when they built us. And it barely, it's barely over the new DOT specification. I don't have the authority to put that before this.
Well, I'm gonna just make a motion right away that we waived that requirement out to be waiver or accept as is.
Accept as is.
It met at the time it was built and it's really close to meeting it now anyway, so I'm gonna make a tear it all up and spend $100.
Well, I had a lot of questions.
That's my motion anyway.
Yeah, okay.
We need a second. We need a second before we discuss it. Marty, you gonna second?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion's been made, you seconded to accept the pre-2014 material. Okay, discussion.
Yeah, Troy, I just had a couple of questions for you or Ted. You probably had, you probably had the answer for it at hand. In the original approval, how many lots were being served?
Well, that was kind of the question, too. There was two lots, sir. And originally, we were planner back. One lot at the time, and co-officer told me the same recently, had 200-foot frontage on Downing Road and had an address on Downing Road, and they considered it to be Downing Road address, so they weren't gonna count that lot. So it would have only been one, which would have meant last year, when I started this process in fall, I was originally given a building permit to put the road in, because I only had one lot there. And I was putting in one more. And then they said, oh, okay, we think we got some problems. Maybe there's a question as to, is that lot have frontage on Parker Woods or on Downing Road? So I said, it doesn't matter, I'm gonna put in more lots. I have more than one kid anyway, so I'll do the whole thing. But yeah, so, and that's your, the first lot I put in has 200-foot frontage on Downing Road. His address was on Downing Road. It wasn't counted as Parker Woods. But to round it all off, I mean, now with what I wanna do, whether it's the second lot or the third lot, I'm gonna do another one anyway, so I decided to go forward and engineer for the whole thing. But there's two lots there now that their driveways do come off Parker Woods.
Okay. We're planning on somewhere between three and seven.
That's right. That's right. That's why I said, well, I'm not gonna...
My second que, my second question would be, how much of that roadway is done that almost met the specification?
Well, that beats the first two lots.
Okay. Is your, your request for the waiver, is that for that portion and you intend to build the rest of the road to the new spec?
That's right. That's right.
Rather than guess...
The whole new way of doing it. Yeah. It's not good. The whole new portion that you have the road profile on today, that you've had for quite some time, shows all new MDOT spec.
Why? I believe that to be the case. I just wanted to be sure.
Yes.
And with the motion, there's just a little wording.
And I mean, it is minuscules, close. And actually, what Ted has today is, we were proposing originally to just widen the existing road, like it's already paved, dig it up four feet on both sides, widen it, add to it. We did some test pits, they committed a little under. The new proposal now, since then, is to, I'm gonna tear up the pavement. I'm gonna redo the whole road.
You gotta redo it anyway?
From Downing Road all the way in. This is, this is what I'm gonna do now. And we're adding the new MDOT spec, which is 2014, just happened. I built this road 15 years ago.
Yeah.
The new spec gravel will be on top of that. So actually, in a sense, this gravel that is very, very, very close will be my subbase material.
Yeah, right.
The new material will go over that.
I'm not an expert at all of that, all of it, but it looked to me like you were doing the whole road.
Yes.
So I didn't understand. So you really don't, you really wouldn't need a waiver. What you'd need is some consideration, would that meet the specification? And it would appear that it would.
Well, the, right. The portion of the road that is existing today, that was already approved as a subdivision, did, was approved and did pass spec when I built it.
Yeah.
Today, it's like 1% off.
Are you tearing that up?
And we're actually...
And you use that as the base and then put on the regular...
We're actually gonna add to that with its new today spec over it. And that's kind of new.
The waiver's not really required.
It doesn't sound it, because he's gonna, he's up...
He's gonna, he's gonna build, he's gonna build it to spec, he just uses the fine gravel as the base.
That's right. But it's required for that base, you know, because that other gravel will still be there if it's not the complete level of...
Yeah.
Are you done with your question?
Yeah.
Ted, I need a bit of clarification on this packet. We have this size distribution report and we have two of them.
Yeah.
And I'm not clear as to what's the difference between the two?
Different sites.
Well, it's, it looks like the same sample.
It's the same sample.
Yeah.
That's slightly different.
But the graphs are different, so I'm just wondering what...
Well, there's two samples they showed you in that report, right? Because they did a test on the old spec, which was up until 14, and then they did a test on the new spec.
Yep.
So it's the same sample under different specs?
That's right.
Okay, that's what I assumed.
That's right.
And so that's where the curve shows that there's very little outside of the spec.
Exactly. You're on right now, yeah.
Okay. So even, even by the old spec, though, it was off by just a hair.
Smidgen.
Right. And the new spec is off by two hairs.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
If you also look at your profiles, you'll see on the, you see, it's, the only place where it really comes into play is really down, in order to get the 1%...
Look at C2.
C2. Look at C2. Profile C2. Look at C2. If you look at C2, oh, you see that, that there's, I think this is pretty much the worst. If you look elsewhere, the other ones, you'll see there's a greater and greater gap. There's, in order to get the 1% gradient, or half percent gradient, in order to get minimal drainage, you'll see there's just several places where there's gotta be verification of the subbase.
Right, yeah.
And it's identified on the, like a plan.
C.20, is it?
C.20.
And you're, you're referencing what section of the...
Station 3 plus, well, it's actually Station 2 plus, I have that, more than to Station 2.8.
Oh, I see. Okay.
3 plus, sorry. 3E. This is really, this is the, this is the place that we have the subgrade, we have the gravel and what they're gonna do is, you're gonna grind, right?
That's right.
Okay. So you're grinding this thing, which is gonna have, is gonna have more aggregate anyways to the base.
Yeah, we'll lift it up for a minute.
Yeah, you're up to it. So if you look further along, if you look at C, C22, C2.2, 2.1, you'll note that the gravel really stretches, because there's a few homes in there where you're gonna have to verify the subgrade, what, whether adding that, that's often determined, then the run down to the river.
Because ultimately, what we were gonna do was build the new portion to today's spec, all brand new, just get the house lot in, get rolling, and then go back in that one's and redo phase one.
Let's see, I hadn't, hadn't even realized you planned on...
I did not plan on redoing phase one until we did the test pits.
Okay. Yeah, that, that was my understanding of...
The last meeting, we required test pits.
Yeah.
We did the test pits, did the gravel spec, and we fell just under. So that, that's the only reason for the change of plan. We were just gonna widen the existing road. Now, I'm gonna dig it up regular.
Ted went there for that, and you tried to...
Yeah, because it didn't actually, it fell just under. So we decided that I gotta punt and do the whole thing.
Ted, Ted, makes it even, my motion, I think I'm even more comfortable. I was basing the motion on just leave it as is, I mean, why not? Well, you gotta take the asphalt out and add more, and so, I think it's even more so.
Well, I tend to agree, because it allows him to leave it the way he is, but doesn't say he has to improve as he wants. I was honestly quite surprised. I thought you were just gonna be doing that new section of the road.
That was the plan. And that was, up until we did the test pits, we didn't know what would be required, because it fell. And a lot of people didn't realize, I think I talked to Ted about it, spec just changed last year.
Yeah.
They changed the gravel spec on MDOT type, type D. And the spec where they changed it, I don't know, I think the engineer talked to you, Ted?
Yeah.
It's on the side that we would prefer. It's not the fine side of the 200 sieve is where there's a lot of clings and packed material. And it actually failed on the side that we would prefer, right?
Yeah.
I mean, on the upper side. So it's, in all due respect, it's...
I have a question. Right now, it's a private road.
Right.
Do you get it, are you intending to keep it private or...
I would definitely keep private. I will never expect the town to take it over. We're gonna plow it, we're gonna maintain it, take care of all that stuff. And I would put it on the record, I prefer it not to be a town road.
Things change in life, I found out. Do what you don't have to do.
Watch out to you.
I forgot my question.
My question, it's just, this is just for my kids. It's gonna be, you know, family up there. We already maintained it today and luckily, I am in the business that can maintain it. So other than that, building this $100,000 road to give my son a house lot, wouldn't be feasible anyway.
Okay. We've been asked to have the motion restated, so we understand what we're looking at.
The question was to allow the existing road, keep it as is without meeting today's standards, because it was, and then I added that it was built to standard and the standards have changed. And then it's, we're getting like 1% of meeting faith anyway, so...
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
And Marty had...
Seconded.
Yeah, and you had a comment?
Yeah, the question is, I don't recall that we've ever had to go through a process like this for a road.
Yeah.
Not, that is...
Not a good road. There's been some roads that...
I mean, in other words, this will be...
Gravel.
In other words, this, this road here will be the best road in town. For a private way. No. Today.
We've had, we do sieve analysis on regular basis.
I mean, to this extent, I mean...
We had West Ring go through the same thing. West Road had to do the same thing.
West Road?
West Road.
Where's West Road?
Off of Blueberry, private way.
Next to the Blueberry, right?
Next to the Blueberry.
Well, I would prefer the motion be a little more specific. It's, to me, it's a little too vague. And I'm thinking in terms of precedent, not so much in terms of the situation, but in terms of precedent.
That's why I had to qualify, saying that it was so close to meeting and we built the spec, just so in case someone never met spec, did not forget it, passed the meeting.
But I would like the motion to reflect that we're talking about only the existing portion of the road that brought out by Bob. And the fact that the surface will be rebuilt, so we're talking about the sub-portion of the existing surface. Okay, I'd be glad to add that it would, the extension, the new road all has to be to today's standards. So that I thought was, would be implied anyway. I don't think we can change that. So I'm only talking about the existing. The protect, the new road has to be today's standard. But as far as requiring him to pull asphalt, I'm not thinking that. I'm taking it the way it is right now.
That's, that's, that's his choice.
And I can do that, that's his choice.
That's his choice. So in case they decide not to, I don't wanna force them to.
Yeah, I'd like to find...
That's my motion, you can vote it down.
I'd like to find some way to say that the, that the pre-2014 road, the road that is currently in place, is fine.
Yeah.
And the new road has to meet the standards. I don't wanna force him to change anything or to take off the top layer of pavement. Mr. Town Planner?
Mr. Chairman, you have a motion. You have to deal with the motion as it is. You can't keep admitting it. You should vote the motion. Motion isn't sufficient, then deny the motion and do again. Okay? And I, Maria, can you, I defy you.
I don't know. I'll listen to the recording a few turns, but I don't have a concise motion.
Well, that's, that's where I was coming from. We need to have concise word...
I think about it, propose the first motion. The first motion.
Okay. Let's...
Should I state it again?
No.
No. No. All of us in favor of the original motion? Raise your hands. All those opposed? Okay.
Now.
Now we can restate the motion. Because that motion was defeated 4 to 1. So I'll turn to our wordsmith.
Another wordsmith, but if you would like to restate the motion, tell me. Yeah, we stated that we allow the existing portion of the road to remain as is without the old portion, the old portion.
Built, built back.
The proposed new road has to meet today's specs. So that, only one of that. Well, is there, nothing to bother, we need some real sentences to work with here.
Here we go. Yeah, we do. Yeah. Because I gotta enforce it.
Okay, I'll, this is, I think I will clear, but...
You can accept the motion.
Yeah, it's just to allow the existing portion of the road to remain as is. That's my motion. I'm not, I don't wanna get into having them pull up the asphalt, that someone else can come up with that one.
So you're, you're saying that the existing road stays as is?
It's good enough.
And, and the extension of that road has to be built?
To today's...
To today's MDOT specs?
Yeah. That's it.
Is there a second on that motion?
Get it to discussion.
So we can get a good discussion if, if no others...
Unless you have another motion that might, maybe I'm missing one. You don't have to second it, because I think they already had the second.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion and then discussion.
Okay.
The applicant has given us documentation that he intends to tear it up. We're considering tear it up, and there was some discussion that then it's gonna be grinded and everything else. So my thought is, we're not requiring him, that's what he's telling us, one he's going to do. And listening to the evidence that was given both verbally from the applicant and from the town planner, that new one should be more than sufficient to meet all of the end of requirements.
Except that it's my understanding, and somebody can correct me if I'm misunderstanding this. He's gonna, Troy, you plan on taking up the pavement and putting additional gravel down?
Plus widening it.
But on the, but on that new, on the old part of the road, putting down that new gravel is not gonna meet the 2014 standard? Or it will?
It will.
It will? Okay.
Plus widening it, sir.
Well, yeah, he, he had done that. I was under the impression that it still would not meet the standard, but I'm glad I got that letter, thank you. Yeah, then...
So, so there is no need for a motion?
Kind of like that, you know, in a way. That we accept, that we accept the plan. That's why I said at the very beginning, that we can accept the plan as submitted by the applicant to put the road to standard.
I think what threw me off was, was the letter from, from the engineer, the last sentence is that the existing material is well-drained, sandy gravel, and should be determined as meeting the town's requirement to base coarse gravel. So I was, my motion was to accept that.
And I think that was before he did all of the other work.
And then move the plan, right?
Okay. Yeah, so, if I, if I may?
Yeah.
There has to be more material added, because the road's not wide enough. The road doesn't have the right pitch for, to meet the minimum gradient, so there has to be material added in some places, subtracted in others, in order to get that gradient. And the only thing that, that they wanna do is not have to remove all of the, the pre-2014 material, because it doesn't meet all of the sieve requirements of the new 2014 standard. So basically, all they're asking to do is for us to allow them to keep the 2000, pre-2014 material and not remove it all.
The sub-material.
The sub-material.
The sub-material.
The subbase. It's the base. It's the base.
So that could be the motion, then, to allow them to keep the base and... So that could be the motion, then, to allow them to keep the base and, so the pre-two thousand and fourteen.
That's it, cause they're, they're changing the road.
I'm, I'm good with that. I think that's what we have to allow.
So.
John?
Well, the way I would word that would be to accept the existing gravel material, pre-two thousand fourteen, to serve as sub-base for the existing portion of the roadway.
But that means we have to defeat this first motion that's out there, right?
Exactly.
Okay? All those in favor of the current motion?
Is it one? All in favor?
All of, all those opposed? Okay. You can unanimously defeat it.
The second motion.
The second motion, now.
I will make the motion that, first one. We accept the existing gravel material with pre-two thousand fourteen specs to serve as sub-base for the existing portion of the roadway. See, I'll second that.
Okay. There's been a motion that's been made and seconded, to accept the sub-base of the existing road. Is there any other debate? Comments, questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion unanimous.
A question.
Yes, Marty?
When we had previously reviewed an application, they were adding onto their existing conditions, they were adding part of the road.
Okay.
Okay? Don't recall us going through this thorough portion of this.
And, and, and I, I understand where you're coming from, and, and I think you might be right, in, in this case, though, we were asked to accept the pre-two thousand fourteen material. And, sorry Troy, but then you said you were gonna build it up to two thousand fourteen spec anyway, and I think that's what threw, I know it's what threw me off. So I think, I think that's what resulted in, in some confusion on the board's part as to, to what was happening.
Okay, I'm just.
You're talking about other applications.
Yes, yes.
I believe we did get the core samples, though. No? You've got a good memory on that, so I'll take your word for it.
Congratulations, Troy. We'll see you in two weeks, and we will have that public hearing.
That's the only question I had, where I thought this was a public hearing, two at the same time, cause it's the last meeting, this is gonna be, so in two weeks, we're gonna do a public hearing and then?
In two weeks, we're gonna do the public hearing, and I think everything else is good to go, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, the only thing, I gotta talk to, I gotta talk to Norman about the watershed act, cause he, he didn't even give the numbers.
What, what?
The numbers for the, he's, point seven over on the, remember we had talked about being point seven over on the C, CFS?
He, he already fixed that last, before the last meeting.
Okay.
He made them adjustments.
Okay.
He tweaked those numbers.
Okay. I'll look at that again.
Yeah.
Yeah, assuming that all of that comes in good, we should, we should set the vote on it.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your understanding. Item number two, Goff Mill Brook Dam Removal, Conditional Use Pre-Application. A proposal to demolish an existing twenty-five foot plus or minus foot wide dam on the Goff Mill Brook in order to facilitate the migration of marine fish, eel, and lamprey species from the Kennybunk River at a properly located ninety-four River Road, back map forty lot eight in the R four Resource Protection and Shoreland Ovalay District. Mary Casner is the owner, the, the well's national, national estuary, that's a difficult word, reserved as the applicant, and Jason Aman is the applicant's agent. No, mine says Jason, sorry. Jacob, sorry about that. We keep trying to change your name, you need to take the hint. Okay.
Is it Jason or Jacob?
Jacob.
Jacob.
Okay. This is only a pre-application hearing, and we, we have to determine a couple of different items.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, if I may.
First of all, as you know, we weren't able to get a quorum together for a site walk. The, the issue, first of all, is that the board still wanna do a site walk prior to telling the applicant exactly what he needs for submission? You can do both, obviously, but what is the status of the site walk? Do you wanna wait until he, he submits the full application, or do you wanna do it prior to?
My thought is that we wait until the full application is in. What does the rest of the board think?
That's what we've done before.
Okay. That being said, this will be the third time we've scheduled a site walk. Once we get the application, we'll have to make sure that we can get enough people out there.
Excuse me, there is a chairman, this would have been the second.
Today would have been the second.
Second.
Yes, and, and what I'm saying is that when the full application comes in, that will be the third time that a site walk has been scheduled. Because it was, it was held once before.
So why don't we cancel it?
It got canceled, and this one got canceled.
So schedule one.
Well, let's wait for the entire application to come in, and we'll schedule one at that point. At least that's my thought on it, unless, unless the board has other ideas.
Well, I think in general, I guess my idea, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of documentation, there's a lot of things that have been asked for. I think the board should be willing to kind of review these and let them know generally how the board is feeling if additional submissions are gonna be required.
Oh, I agree.
Or, or if not, I mean, I just think that they're, and that could be a complete one, we, for a pre-application review, we'll usually look at the documentation, see what is, in general, the board is feeling, it's not a final determination. You can change your mind later, but it gives the applicant an idea of how the board is feeling about each one, and then they can make their own assessment of what additional studies.
Oh, no, I wasn't suggesting that we not tell the applicant what we're looking for, I was simply saying.
Oh, no, no.
This is simply from the, from the point of view of a site walk. When we get the full application, we will then schedule the site walk, but in the meantime, we have a number of issues that have come up that we've been asked to address. And we should address them, because they, they all involve the application itself.
Okay. Well, we haven't, this isn't something we do in the, in every moment.
This is a little, this is a little.
I'm not sure really what you should ask for.
Well, first off, if you look at the application, the pre-application, we are being asked to waive a number of different items.
Push that with that.
Well, here's a good enough place to start. We're being asked to waive the applica, the application fee. Detailed review is not needed for this project.
Do you wanna go through one way at a time?
Yeah, I think we should, we should, we should do them one at a time. Discuss them, and then the applicant will understand why we're going one way or the other.
Well, I think this, this will require as much review as, as any other project that we feel the, I think this will, will affect planning properties and some of the ecosystems, so I think it will require a view beyond our expertise. So I'd rather not show me a motion.
Well, let's have all the discussion.
Yeah, let's have discussion on it.
Okay, so I'd rather not waive that fee.
Yeah, I think my point, on, on the first one, and although the applicant calls out detailed review, the actual fees are established by the selectmen. It would be more appropriate that they ask the question of the selectmen rather than this board, cause we don't have the authority, that's my opinion.
However, I think the board could make a recommendation to the selectmen in terms of a statement, you know, that the review is not needed.
Or, or their determination.
But I agree with you, the selectmen need to make that decision.
Marty?
I think that it should be applied. Because the simple fact is, the time and effort, it's gonna involve between us and the planning office to review anything else, that's why there's an application fee.
Okay.
We don't work for nothing.
Hey, Mark.
Well, we do.
We do.
No, you don't, we get paid for it.
The, yeah, and I, I had started my comment from the applicant, that, that they had called out the detailed review, but if you go back through the whole application, there's a quarrel for CE or something, probably. You know, they're a nonprofit, I, I think there has been projects from nonprofits where application fees have been, so I don't know that for a fact, but again, I think the selectmen could.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
So, yes.
Could I put this to bed right now?
Yeah.
Selectmen don't have the authority to waive, and they don't waive fees. We tried to do that before.
Oh, the selectmen.
Sorry, wait in here. Selectmen don't have no mechanism to waive fees.
Ah, see, I know, we don't.
I didn't know.
If, if we don't, then the selectmen don't, then I guess they're gonna have to come up with the fee. Let's take a poll.
One thing that, that I guess we'd be hoping to hear is, in, in familiarizing myself with the packet that we received, there are two fees. One is for a minor development, and one is for a major development, and so we'd like to have some clarification on which one of those this project would qualify as.
The town planner will be happy to address that issue.
Two fifty, based on the. Two fifty for a minor development, and then also a minor development would be reviewed by the staff.
Right, a staff review.
And a major development requires planning board review, and I think it's five hundred dollars?
Well, in, in, I understand that, but in all fairness, the planning board has the ability to tell staff that we want to review that.
Sure.
Even, even though it would be a minor fee, we have the ability to say we wanna see it. And in this case.
Well, you're gonna run into the same problem, I think, in, in my view of where, where things are, these fees are all based on basically construction and project, this is a project, so I see that as falling under that category, but sure not construction.
No.
Well.
Well, this is what, this is what a minor development definition is. Any expansions of an existing conditional use, either in forest space or ground area by twenty-five percent or five hundred square feet, whichever is less.
If not.
A change of use from permitted to conditional use that does not involve any change in the building coverage, parking, driveways, or other site plan details. Filling of wetlands which require NRPDA, uh, NRPA permits from DEP or nationwide permits from the county court.
Well, yeah, but we don't, they've submitted them, and thank you for doing that, but our regulations fire that it be submitted, because we don't deal with the issue, we're not regulators, and it's not filling, so.
Yeah, and, so it's basically, any development not classified as minor requiring a conditional use permission, review both libraries.
Yeah, and I think that's probably why it's here, right?
Right.
Yeah, and, so. And what's major? So.
Anything that's not minor.
Yeah.
And anything that's major is anything that's not minor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the board can make the determination, right? I know.
Technically, this could be just a shoreline zone improvement anyways.
Well, tonight, I would say, I figured it out as, in that case, minor would be repair.
Well.
But it, 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 in consideration, instead of a removal, removal is major.
If, if this were a shoreline zoning issue, what's the cost of that permit?
I don't have that in here, normally. I think it's on the application.
I think it's last.
Okay.
I'll have to check on that.
Yeah, but again, that's for construction within the shoreline zone, huh?
No, anything you're doing is shoreline zone, this is in the shoreline zone, they're in the RP zone, under the resource protections. Exactly, it's occurring.
And, and the, the cutting and trimming, I mean, it sure doesn't go to, maybe, I'm, I thought it would be. Everything I read had to do with building or cutting, didn't have to do with remove. The only thing I found in our regulation that might apply, and I was gonna ask the applicant, what are you doing with all of the, the rocks and materials? Is it staying onsite, or you're taking it away?
It's being trucked offsite or buried in the uplands.
Are you gonna? If they're moving over a hundred cubic yards, wouldn't, wouldn't this just be a mineral ex, by our definition, the mineral extraction, that could go to the decision?
If they weren't doing it in the resource protection, yes, it would be an extraction of material that would be associated with a construction project. Oh, but it isn't a construction project, so it would be, it would be, it wouldn't be a min, it's not a mining operation, they're removing material, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, again, that's what our mineral extraction thing deals with, the, the removal of material over a hundred cubic yards from any one area to another area.
Right.
Offsite is all, is all our regulation says, so we've looked, we've seen that that for now, for just that removal, I, I mean, obviously, they've got a lot of other documentation and stuff here, but.
But you're, you're basing your opinion on the fact that removing something doesn't count as construction? Doesn't fall under construction?
I'm basing my opinion on our ordinance, which gives me a definition of mineral extraction.
Well, mineral extraction, yeah, but that's definitely not what it is.
Yes, but by our definition, it is. Okay, I hear ya. Mineral extraction, any operation with any twelve-month period which removes more than one hundred cubic yards of soil, topsoil, loam, sand, gravel, clay, rock, peat, or other like material from its natural location offsite. So by our definition, here, that's where. Yes, the question is over, so I don't mean to say that it doesn't, but it meets all of the requirements. Question is, it says from its natural site.
It's been there fifty years.
No, I mean, it's been there for a long time. Yeah, cause it was constructed, and so it was it. I'm just, I'm just asking a question, I mean. I think that's all I was doing, I was just presenting. Yes, it does fit the definition very well.
Okay, but I guess it still comes back to the, we're discussing whether the fee should be waived as requested.
No.
A, we cannot waive a fee, and, or this fee anyway, and B, it sounds like the board is not inclined to waive it, even if we go.
Some move.
Yeah.
Yeah. Some move.
Okay, so make, a motion has been made to not waive the fee.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there? Well, no, but we've got a motion not waived, and it's been seconded, is there any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion to not waive the fee? All those opposed? Motion carries four to one? The fee is imposed? For lack of a better term. I don't know, I don't know quite how to go about saying that.
It's not waived.
The fee is not waived, thank you. Okay, the next one. Property site survey. We're being asked to accept the overhead image with the property line overlay. The rationale being that the site is contained on the property of Mary Casner, and no value is added by a survey. And that is the very, the very first image.
And again, I think those ordinances were the bill, or the building of something, the construction, and the going to our dimensional requirements and the rest of it.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of wondering how the definition of an alteration would fit in? Is any change, addition or modification in, in construction other than cosmetic or decorative? So I'm wondering if that would not apply. Something helps.
Well, not to this point.
It's definitely a change.
Yeah, it is, yeah, there is a change, but it's.
Well, I, we are, we are asked to accept the overhead image with property line overlay, but if you look at that, look at where the road is specified and where the road actually is, not to mention a lot of other things, it's not even close. So, why, how can we possibly accept that? Is there a more accurate overlay? Well, this is showing that the river isn't even in, within the river boundary during the orange, you have.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I'm not sure that we're asking to have this particular image accepted in place of a survey. We're simply asking that the survey, whatever the requirements for a survey under the conditional use permit, not be required. This, this GIS data, well, just to clarify, this is from the state parcels layer, so I threw this together to illustrate it.
I understand that, but this actually does say, please accept the overhead image with the property line overlay, so you're asking us to accept something that is obviously not accurate.
Okay. Well, as far as, of course, the weather, we get, I think we can actually get something, we should get something a little more accurate, but at first, my thought, as far as that waiver was, well, it's gonna be affecting, just the water level is affected by the contours, but, but then I thought more about it, it's all downhill, and it would lessen that, but I think if we're raising the level, it would affect the property a lot more than lowering the level. So, as long as the, all the butters, are the three properties that is, that will be affected, right after we know?
It goes upstream too, it's affecting upstream.
Upstream, right. I guess that's a question, how far upstream is this?
I, I, in lieu of a site block yesterday, I brought some, or tonight, I brought some photos to share, if you're interested. It shows one location upstream, within the impoundment, if anybody's interested.
How far up does the impoundment go?
It hits a Beaver Dam.
Okay.
At least it did in two thousand and fourteen, when we did our longitudinal profile. It's not entirely clear, without doing actual, real-time kinematic GPS surveying to collect the elevations of the stream bottom, it's not possible to determine where specifically the influence of the impoundment ends and the natural stream depth begins. That being said, the depth of the stream within, say, a tenth of a mile or so, appears to be within, I'd say, a foot or so, six inches maybe, of what the natural conditions are further upstream. And again, that's sort of a observational data, it's not quantitative data, so, you know, you can take that for what it's worth.
So, that, that tenth of a mile puts you back around the road?
Which road?
From the dam.
Right, from the dam. A tenth of a mile back upstream, up past the Beaver Dam, would take you up someplace close to the road?
No, not past the Beaver Dam, but prior to the Beaver Dam.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not, not really, well below the power line right of way.
Okay.
Just in terms of guidance on the property site survey, really, we're looking for the property lines here, and the board in the past, I can't speak for the board, but the board in the past has, under certain conditions, except the GPS data, instead of an actual survey.
Mary Castner, I have heard.
Yeah, but that's one proposal you might discuss, or look at some actual survey, I think there are surveys available, but certainly, what we have here is not acceptable.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Are the town tax maps acceptable? I don't think so.
No. That was done with the same kind of system that that overlay was done, I believe.
Right.
Sorry, one more question.
Yes, sir.
The boundaries of the property are outlined in the deed, and they reference the stream and rights to the opposite bank, which is about as clear of a reference to the dam as we've been able to uncover. We could certainly go out and GPS the edge of the stream, but it's, it is where it is, and her property extends to the edge of the stream with rights to the opposite bank. So, we can, we can certainly get GPS if that's acceptable to the board, but it is where it is.
Okay. You mentioned that last time you were here, that extends to the opposite bank, and that's one of the things that, that will affect the budding property, because I think their property will expand. So, where is the line? The casters, or her, is it putting stake in the ground where it is now, or will it shift with the edge of the water?
It's where it is, it's where it was.
Once the water goes down, the property line moves.
If I may provide some photographs, just so you can have a visual.
Just for a second, Charlie.
A budding property to the stream, okay? As we can see on this particular photo, okay? They have a property line, okay? Wherever their property line is, or anything else, they would have to have it pinned and marked somewhere automatically. That would show you on the, on the other side of the, the stream.
And like, it depends how the deed is written, though.
Yeah, but Charlie, guess what? As we've gone through, as they've gone through the port before, high water tide, low water tide, and turn around for the beaches or anything else. I mean, that was, there, uh, it doesn't tell you, because like, over the years, okay? It swells, it narrows, so I mean, uh, it's like saying, okay, your snow is gonna be so many feet, you're gonna try to move your, your water line to the, to the edge of the stream?
What I would recommend to the applicant is that you investigate, because there certainly have been surveys in this area, you investigate who has done previous surveys, and approach the surveyors as a nonprofit, they might be able to give you a stamped map as to where the property lines are.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna, if you have, I, I'm not sure one hundred percent that we need a survey. The reason being that you have a deed that references the fact that they, that the casters have access to the dam on the other side of the stream, and I can't remember the term, the wording that you would use, but it seems to indicate that the deed itself says that they have control of the other side of, of the dam across from them. So, I'm not sure if we need to have that surveyed or not.
Well.
It's just my thought on it.
Question for you is, reading of a deed, it may be a description, okay? But Turner, as we have found in the past, and myself for an example, okay? The deed said one thing, okay? But the actually, uh, pin marks, okay? You can lose half an acre or more. That's one of the reasons why the town maps are not acceptable. That's why you're always sucking up everybody to get a new survey map, so possibly to try to make the town maps more accurate, okay? Because whose rock is it, what tree is it, and over how many years the property has been surveyed, and we're dating back in, under discussion of nineteen fifty, or whatever else, that it was done, or the dam was repaired, or did something, it's a long time ago. A lot of water has passed through that, so I mean.
Water over that dam.
I, I understand your point, Marty, because my deed references a maple tree on the other side of Duck Brook. Oh, really? There's no maple tree over there. So, I, I do understand that point. I'm just thinking that because the dam is a fixed piece, that, you know, you know where it is. You know, that was just my thought on it.
Well, and I would, I would like to counter that by saying, true, the casters probably own the dam, but the removal of the dam is going to affect more than just that area.
I understand that, I'm simply saying, because we're, we're dealing with whether or not they get it surveyed, and whether it gets surveyed will not affect, you know, if you remove the dam, if, if we agree that the deed says that they own the dam and the rights to the land on the other side, removing that dam will not alter the, the survey. It'll, it, they either own it or they don't own it, and that's, that's my only point to whether or not we need to have the survey done.
Okay, right. My point was that the fact that the, the stream is gonna be altered, and that may affect some of the.
Yeah.
Mines, and at least, certainly the property owners.
Have you talked to the property owners on the other side?
No.
On the river? Because I think that, that would make me more comfortable, that, because I don't wanna make a decision that's gonna affect some of its property. I think it'll pertain to their advantage, unless they like that pond, they stand, they might regret that move, but they may not have any say in that matter, but it'll affect their, might affect their property line. So, if they, and if they're comfortable with it, I, I'd do all right.
Well, that's a habitat issue.
Habitat issue.
That's a whole other issue.
I'm just talking about the property.
About the habitat issue.
Yeah.
We knew it wrong.
Jacob?
Just, just to add some information to the discussion, and somebody mentioned, oftentimes this is deed specific, but in other places where dams have been removed and impoundment has been dewatered, the main law that says that the property owner owns to the low water mark has then allowed them to gain property essentially. In this particular case, Goss Mill Brook is the boundary line between the properties, so it's likely that the property owners on both sides of the brook would gain some property. That being said, the impoundment, for the most part, in fact, pretty much entirely, is contained within the banks of the stream. So, it may be that any dry land that is gained by any property owner will be subject to seasonal flooding anyway.
So, let's, let's address the issue of the survey. Do we want to have a survey done? Or not?
I.
Somebody make a motion.
I, I, I'll make a motion, Turner, not of the entire property of the Castner property, because that's massive acreage, okay? I'm just referring to where the dam is and the butters on the other side. To have more specific information, survey if it needed to be, yes.
And also?
Yes.
Yeah, are you asking for a, an actual survey, a stamped survey of that?
See, when we accept it, I mean, uh.
I just wanted to.
By other, other property owner, other businesses, or anything else, that's what we've made everybody else do. This should be an exception.
Let me make sure I understand. You're talking about a survey on the other side of Goss Brook, for the property owners that, that are up against that, including the dam? Or are you talking about having her survey the entire property?
Not the entire property.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
Not the entire property, because there is a, I don't know, fifty, a hundred acres, I don't know what it is. I mean, that's.
So, it's, it's whatever is impacted by Goss Brook.
This is what being impacted, yes, sir.
Thank you. Marty wants to have a survey done of the property abutting Goss Mill Brook. What's the name of the stream again?
Goss Brook, uh, Goss.
Goss Mill Brook.
Yes.
You know, where the dam is and the property lines on the other side, just that section, not the entire Castner property. Is that possible?
If that was a property in order to know that one line was accurate.
What was the whole thing?
Unless it's based on an existing survey.
Right.
Is this a subdivision that's?
Yes, there is a subdivision there.
And it's before my time, was, we know if the survey was done on?
So, subdivision, so survey had.
Yeah, all such.
So, you should be able to find that information up at the notebook?
Yeah, you might have it.
You might have it in the office.
If not, they have that at the work camp, registered dates. But there probably is a survey.
So, suffice it to say additional information.
So, one, we could do a reduction or a reverse engineering of this.
Okay.
So, if we know where the survey, where the line is of the opposite, of the opposite bank, and your deeds, which you will provide us with, and probably get a copy of their deed, whoever's on the other side, you should be able to determine this. And if that doesn't do it, then the board has no recourse but to say, we need a survey.
Yeah.
But I think if you, if you look at available information for us.
We haven't been going through a few, not yet. Well, but still, you're asking for a surveyor to verify that that line is where it is.
Yes.
That's what you said, huh?
Yes.
Could it be based on existing surveying plan?
Would you allow it to anybody else?
Well, it, it could be if a surveyor approves it, because that's often, surveyors go by previous surveys.
Yeah.
So, that's why, that was my previous suggestion, if you could get a surveyor who was in that area, that has worked at, to say, well, yes, these lines are accurate, boom, there's my stamp, you're fine.
And I guess, sitting, what you said earlier, that if present, uh, yourself as a nonprofit, they might be willing just to stamp the, the, go. I, I don't know if I want incur more cost to, to have to redo a survey, if there's already one already there, then it could be five thousand dollars for.
We've made businesses do it.
But that's where, there may have not been any survey at all to base it on.
We have potentially, what, one, two, three, four?
I mean, just as far as you're going, that's a farthest.
Five, six, seven, it could be seven different property. We don't know all five back, because. So, I, no, I don't support that, I think we need to know where the line is. But they, that would still require a, a, a survey detail, it'd have to be based on the survey, I think that's what you're asking for, and this wouldn't take away from that. What, what? To, I think what, what I'm saying isn't.
Okay.
Nobody signed it, they got it.
No.
Yeah, I was, I was about to raise that point.
Yeah.
We're discussing.
Okay, so.
I'll second Marty's motion.
Okay. Now that we've had the discussion, is there any other discussion about the motion?
Just to be clear from the start with that, if you require, not a new survey, but have, have a survey.
Okay, so I know, I think I'm gonna have to rule that motion out of order, because we're asking for a partial survey, not an entire survey, and you can't get a partial survey.
Or no.
Ms. Ridley, why can't we have a partial survey?
You have to close the boundaries. What they can do, what can happen is a surveyor, especially the surveyor who did the Middle Brook subdivision, who has that document on hand, can certify that this is accurate.
Right.
And that's, that's where you would, you'd go there. But if you ask for a new surveyor to come in and say, I'm only gonna look at this guy's work from here to here, most surveyors aren't gonna feel comfortable putting their lessons on the line, because that could be wrong.
Unless there's documentation to verify the survey, I mean, I mean, you're well aware that a surveyor's, like eighty percent of their work. I mean, you're well aware that a surveyor's, like eighty percent of their work is just getting documentation, and only twenty percent is actually out in the field. So the documentation exists, they should be able to put the points together. And if it doesn't exist, we need it.
For a mortgage survey, do you have a general idea of what the board wanted the survey to be? Do you think, based on our discussion?
So far, of the things that you talked about.
Because my point would be, they've asked for something very specific.
Property site survey, please accept the overhead images with the property line overlay. We should just vote on that. They've been given additional information.
Well, right now, we have a motion for a partial survey.
Yep.
All those in favor of the partial survey? All those opposed? Motion passes three to two.
So that was a partial?
Motion is to have a partial stamp survey for the side of the Goss Mill Brook where the dam is.
Assuming that you can get a surveyor to give you that partial survey. If not, I think I would follow the planner's recommendation and go see the guy who did that subdivision.
Well, Mr. Planner, or Mr. Chair, let me make a motion.
Okay.
Per the applicant's request, I'd like to move that the board not accept the overhead image with the property line overlay. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded not to accept the overhead image of the property line. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Proposed site plan, please accept the before and after site schematics that form part of the Army Corps permit application. Rationale being no value is added by engineering drawings of a demolition.
That's this document?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are these the schematics that's...
I believe so.
The topographic map, two thousand fourteen? Oh, that one, okay, sorry.
The powerpoint sketch.
That was accepted. That was accepted by Army?
I would usually have bearing marks on it.
I think that's stated in their, it's stated in their request. We usually ask for, we usually ask for these things because there's something new after. There's just going to be something gone afterwards, going to be more of a natural string without that bar or bridge across. And I'm not sure what he would gain either. I think it's fair with what I think.
Mr. Chair. We've been involved in a previous dam removal project on a tributary of the Sammer Falls River in the town of Elliott. For that project, there was substantial regrading of the adjacent upland area. And for that project, there were engineering sketches. We've been advised by our contractor and our agency partners that engineering sketches would not add anything significant. It's a one day, come in, remove the physical structure itself, lay down hay and seed in the impacted shoreland area that the excavator used to access the site, and that's it. So there's no addition or alterations to the upland area at all. And the dam removal will consist of moving all manmade material down to the natural substrate.
Well, I'm looking at your schematics, such as they are, and it doesn't look like you're removing a lot of the material. Looks like you're scattering.
Yeah. The movement of stone is a habitat enhancement technique to provide structure to the stream.
So you're not taking it upsite?
At all. Some stone would be distributed upstream of the dam to provide in-stream structure, which provides habitat for fish. So it's a relatively common habitat enhancement technique with these types of projects.
Question?
Right.
Question? That crystal ball type, you don't worry, okay? We don't know what the base is underneath upstream. Muck or whatever else that. How are you going to move it upstream if you don't know the subbase along the way?
The excavator won't be moving anywhere from where it's, from the pad that it's working on. It's going to place the stones within a reach of the arm.
My name is Paul Destin, I'm the director of the Wells Museum, and I work with Jake. We're not looking at taking the old concrete and scattering upstream. We're looking at some of the rocks that are in the existing area and putting them upstream. This is, if someone has an objection to that, we can pull that from this, the plan. This was recommended to us by Fisheries Biologists, from the Department of Marine Resources and then Fisheries Wildlife. So it's not something we said we want, we should do. This was recommended to improve, enhance fisheries habitat upstream of the dam.
Marty will correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you understood his question. He's saying, you don't know what the subbase upstream is like, so if you take stones and put them in there, they may disappear without the muck.
And may I say, that's an excellent point. Because right now, because of the, that impoundment has been there for long, right now, it's probably siltation. As you remove the dam, some of that silt will naturally... Those are the things that we will react to when the dam is removed. We're not going to say, okay, this is plan B, now that the dam has come out, now we're going to scatter the stones. We obviously will look at the structure, and, you know, if it's all muck, maybe we're not, we don't want to just immediately put, you know, stone in there. That's something you adapt to when you...
Did I understand you correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're absolutely, you're absolutely right. There's probably more silt in that area muck right now, because it's been trapped upstream of the dam for, you know...
A hundred years.
Yeah, probably.
So, really, that's my, that's my problem, though. Because you're talking about, you know, kind of seat of the pants, we'll take a look at it and then do what we think is right. How can we go back and say, this project has been done properly? We don't know, and you can't tell without engineering studies. You should know what's there before you start. You should know what you're going to leave behind when you're done, so that we can evaluate the success of that removal if you go forward.
What are the criteria that you use for evaluating the placement of stone in a stream? Just so, I heard subbase, I don't quite know what that means. So I'd like to clarify.
The lining of the river, okay? If you're going to move the stones upriver or within the throw of the excavator, okay? Is it fifteen, twenty feet, or whatever else that? Doesn't tell us that, okay? But if you're going to put it there, you want to know where you're going to put it? When you got, when you can look from the bridge and you can see the stone there, but what's upstream, crystal ball isn't telling you anything.
So, but what I'm trying to understand is what the...
Feeling, turn around and know what's there. I mean, you know, do what touch you feeling. I mean...
Yeah, I've walked through the impoundment in the deeper area where the main flow of the channel is. It's hard substrate on the bottom. And like you said, if you look at the stream from the bridge where it's not impounded, it's rock. So that's the natural substrate of the stream. If the dam wasn't there, that silt would not be there. And eventually, the silt will flush out, and you'll be left with the natural substrate. That's kind of the whole point of the project.
Okay, so the question is, do we accept the before and after schematics from the Army Corps of Engineering?
I have a high time to check, but that's, it's not really telling us much. It's a little rainless and gray blobs on it.
Little plastic figure.
Conceptual picture, that's, that's all. Like the gentleman said, they're going to move some rocks, okay? The dirt is going to, and they've got a lot of his, in this dam work. He's got letters, I think, from each of the agencies that kind of control these sorts of things and are in support of this kind of...
What would help me is if there was some description of...
Written script.
I'm hearing what you're saying, and it makes sense. It seems like that's the way you're going for, but we wouldn't know that by looking at...
Well, that's not a schematic, right? That tells us nothing.
Yeah, so it'd be good to have some of that detail written, maybe just what the plans are, what the steps would be.
Well, I mean, you can do, this is like, what is it, done in MS Paint or something like that? I mean, you know, you get a halfway decent, you know, something like, what's it called? Sketchup. And you do an architectural drawing, or not architectural, but you do a decent drawing with some contours to show us what's going on, with some actual dimensions and some actual layout, that we can see what's happening. This is just random.
Does the board have some sort of preference? Or are there some sort of guidelines for where stones? I guess I just don't understand. It seems arbitrary to me to ask us to create a sketch that shows specifically where individual stone is going to be placed. We're not, this is not a foundation for a building.
Take your turn, Chair.
Yes, all right.
Jake, you have, what's your target, what's your target species population for the stream enhancement, for the structure? Is there any, any species that you're going for on this?
Yeah, there's a whole host of species. All native, naturally occurring species.
Okay, you have, you have standard methodologies used to create structure in a, in a waterway. Do you not, you have literature on this?
Absolutely. And this, the contractor that we're using has done this throughout the state. This is not, he's not, this is not his first time doing this.
Could you supply the board with some of that literature that discusses how one places structure into a stream? That it's actually, it's actually done on site at that time? Because it is, I've participated in these myself, and I know that you don't plan exactly where you're going to put things. You look at the material you've got.
Well, what if it'll be done, you're going to see something else you can't do.
Well, you do want to create holes, you want to create, and you want to create backwaters and feeding areas and holding areas. But you have literature that could explain that to the board, that you'd be following those methodologies. I think that would help them a lot.
Sure.
We don't do dams every day.
We're still back to the question of whether or not we accept the before and after site schematics. I need a motion.
I make a motion, we do not accept what presently is in view.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second one.
A motion has been made and seconded to not accept the schematics that we've been presented with. Is there any discussion?
I only throw in that, that if there was more detail, some more description in it, it would be helpful.
As presented.
As presented.
Yep, okay. All those in favor of the motion? Motion's unanimous. And the last item. Name, mailing address, and map lot number of all the abutters within five hundred feet of the subject property printed on Avery fifty-one sixty labels. Please accept the closest three abutters on the far bank as meeting this requirement. The rationale? The requirement for all property owners within five hundred feet should not apply, as they will not be affected. Marty?
Discussion or comment?
Do you want to make a motion, or do you want to...
I was saying, let me make comment first.
Okay.
Then that will go by what I'm going at. Where we've had prior trouble or questions where it applied to across the street.
Across the river.
Across the street, which is Arundo and another town. So we do not get into the problem or not notification through another town. I think, I would say no.
Okay.
Is that a motion? I'll, I'll make a motion unless you want it. Motion is that we, that we don't waive the requirement to mail to abutters. I think communication is always better. You better get the questions now than after, to get lost with them.
Okay. So the motion has been made not to waive the requirement to notify the abutters within the five hundred foot...
No, no.
I don't know, I'm thinking...
I'll wait for a second.
Yeah, we need a second.
Restrain the motion then.
That we do not grant the waiver to mail to...
Only the three of them. That's the, that's what they want.
We want that they require it to fight within five hundred feet. I think that's, that's required.
It's written in the...
So just... Yeah, so we don't grant the waiver.
Deny the waiver.
Deny the waiver.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to deny the waiver for mailing.
For discussion purposes, this is really the only item that I have had some difficulty with. I totally believe our communication has to be very good with all of our residents. I agree with you. This impact is all of the abutters even in Kenwood. So they should be advised of the plan that's coming in, as that would be, in my opinion. As well as, there's going to be some effect even up the stream. I do believe the board has the authority to require additional abutters. Does that five hundred feet, five hundred feet from the dam? I think you're, I think you covered with the freeze. But I think, I think all of the abutters along the stream could at least have the opportunity to voice their comments. And that's how, I mean, that's how I feel.
Yes, Mr. Planner.
Point of, of order, I, as you recall, I defended the board at an appeal. Is there a signal? Right? On the issue of requiring to abut, to notify abutters in an adjacent town. The ZDA upheld the board's position that they were not required to notify all abutters in adjacent town. However, we do notify the planning department within the adjacent, and it's up to them to notify abutters if they're so deep. But our requirement is not to notify neighbors in adjacent towns.
But we must have more than three people along that.
It's five hundred feet, you know, from the location of the dam. I would say, if you want us to extend it up to the high watermark, it's not that many. It's, you don't pay for the, well, actually, your fee pays.
That's why it's not waived.
Actually, it's something you want to do because it's a basis for appeal. If we don't do it, so this is a small task. It really, we don't want to repeal on that basis.
Sure, I think when this initial waiver request list, this was included with the pre-application packet, perhaps naively thinking that perhaps this would not require conditional use permit.
So the motion has been made and seconded to not waive the mailing requirement. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Only for the reason that I stated before, and it's kind of semantic, it was in their wording, actually. So, it's catch, because I do want to pick him off from the...
But, so is it, is it four to one or five to...
Four to one.
Four to one, thank you.
But I figured, I'll probably talk to him to about it directly anyways.
Yeah, we should direct the planner to contact Ken Buck's. Ken Buck or Ken Buck Porter?
I'd do both.
Do both. Notify both of the planning officers.
You got to appeal, but people across the road, that's why I made that mention.
That's why I came back.
Really got my little...
Across the river and across the... They already touched, which wasn't that to make mailing, they only wanted to notify three.
Right.
And so it's, it's wording, I hope you guys understand.
Yeah, I'll have something like that, yeah. Okay. I can tell. Yeah, the rest of this, the other, the other letter deals with nine, seven, eight, one through eight, which we will end up addressing on our own. But I do appreciate the information that gives us something to look at. But, but we will end up voting on each one of those separately. John?
I, I would still, I, I'm actually very concerned about environmental impact. And we have no information on environmental impact. I would really like to see some information on that. There are, I mean, just to my mind, there are two major impacts that we are looking at. You say that the silt that is there now, the siltation will flush out. Well, that has an impact downstream. So what's that impact? Where's it flushing to and what's going to happen there? And then the other major concern I have is you're, you're touting access by marine species, but there are a number of invasive species that are very damaging, which would also have access. And I'm wondering, for instance, what about green crab and Asian shore crab? Which, you know, that's, that's almost an ideal habitat. Are they going to be moving up in there? So I'd very much like to see some indication that you've done at least some research there and we have some indication of what the environmental impacts are. Now, that's speaking for me, I'm not.
No, I agree, I, no, I agree. I agree, yeah. I mean, I think that maybe lamprey, does that turn on?
If I, if I may just.
Yes, Chairman.
It's, it's a really good point. I, I do know that our research director has, has spent the last year and a half studying the impacts of green crabs as well as the Asian shore crab. We've become, for better or worse, experts at it. And we, we know of the abundance certainly in salt marshes. The salt marsh does end downstream. I believe that is the head tide. So most likely the impacts would not be green crabs. But I can tell you, they are, they certainly are a concern and you don't, they're not there, you don't want them. But that, I, that those are questions we certainly can answer. As well as the siltation, we've done work with Stan Tech, which is probably the, the, the engineering firm that's done the most dam removals certainly in New England. And they have tremendous amount of experience with siltation, you know, build up behind dams and that sort of.
In fact, I have the highest respect for Kristen, your research director.
Yeah.
I work with her quite a bit and I, if you could get her to weigh in on certain things, that would be great. But as you probably know, green crabs are very salt tolerant, so they do move into very low salinity areas.
Yeah.
And, I mean, they're, that's not the only species that are possible. So, you know, we've got to balance things and see if this is actually a good move or if we should leave well enough alone.
Okay. We have a letter from the Arundel Historical Society. I don't know if you, you have a copy of it, but we have one that is available.
Did you get one?
Yes, we did, yeah.
Okay. And I, I'll just read the, "We see no need to eliminate a thriving ecosystem in order to replace it with another, especially in light of the fact that no environmental impact study or plant animal surveys have been done, nor are any intended to be done."
Yeah, but we wouldn't know that if we get the board application.
Well, we do know that because it was stated that none were going to be done. Jacob?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that. We certainly appreciate the input from the Arundel Historical Society. I have some objection to their weighing in as the historical society on the environmental impacts of the project. So in other words, if we're interested in the impacts to historical resources, we would consult perhaps the Arundel Historical Society. The Maine Historic Preservation Commission has already been consulted and I believe that you have a copy of their findings.
We do.
In regards to environmental impacts, the historical society would not be the first place that I would go to. And again, I, I, you know, it was great that they were all here last time. I wasn't anticipating a semi-public hearing. I felt like the historical comments section ended at some point and the public comments section began. And again, I, I had some great conversations with some of those folks and I, after the meeting, I extended my offer again to go speak with them about the project. I was told by the president, Jake Hawkins, that they had heard all they needed to hear and that it would not be necessary for me to come in to speak to them. So we appreciate their input in that regard. We have presented a number of letters of support from state and fisheries, state and federal fisheries agencies, including biologists who have been on site and have been, are intimately familiar with this project. They're all in support of this project. Your concerns about green crabs have not been addressed. And I think that's something that we'd be happy to, to pursue.
Yeah, any invasive species, that. Well documented throughout, there's all of the potential benefits, but I, my first time at this, but it led me to the question, well, what about everything else?
So as, as part of the ongoing information gathering, we have requested a formal review by the regional wildlife biologist for IFW. So they're going to review their database of statewide resources. They're going to provide a letter addressed to the planning board that describes their position on the impacts of the project.
I, I just wanted you to respond to that.
Sure.
Because it is out there. Personally, I'm kind of, I'm concerned about the fish upstream. When you, when you take the DM out, do you have any idea what the, what the fish upstream are like? You know, what, how, are there brook trout out there? Has there been any survey done to come up with some kind of account as to how many fish are up there? Because I, I like the freshwater fish, so I'll be quite honest.
And the, the state IFW has conducted surveys in Gothmill Brook. So they have data on what fisheries are currently existing. The, the impounded area itself is not, would not be considered a brook trout habitat. It's more conducive to a warm water fishery like a chain pickerel or a small mouth bass. At certain times of the year when the water countries are conducive, there's no doubt that there's brook trout in there. But the ideal habitat for a brook trout is a free flowing riffle and pool habitat. It's not a, it's not even an impounded dam. So I understand your question there. In terms of, there were questions at the previous meeting about turtles and otters and, and other.
Beavers.
Beavers and other sorts of animals. And there's no doubt that there will be a change to the upstream ecology going from an impoundment to a free flowing stream. Some individual animals will be displaced by that. So if a turtle prefers an impoundment and it's no longer an impoundment, the turtle's gonna, is gonna move on. They may go downstream to the Kennebunk River. With any, probably most of the, of the applications that you guys review for buildings, you're going to be displacing animals if you're cutting down trees and, and building buildings. The squirrels, the birds, et cetera, they're going to go elsewhere. We're not, th- th- this project, we wouldn't be doing this project unless it had significant benefits for the native fishery, which includes brook trout.
And, 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 Chairman, I would like to speak up on behalf of brook trout as well. Not that I'm going to be spending all day tomorrow pursuing a line of sponthanalis at some mountain stream. They're only about this big, but it's the most glorious fish in the world. And we have in all of our, most of our restoration, it's always targeted, would never want, we want to enhance brook trout habitat, not to track from it because it's a gem of a species, Maine is the last refuge of the native brook trout, certainly eastern, eastern brook trout. So this will, we believe this will be a benefit to brook trout, just as the fish ladder that we worked with at Kenny Bunk, Kenny Bunk for Water District that we put in is benefiting brook trout as well. So it's, it's a keystone species and may it thrive forever. And we believe this will be a, a benefit to brookies.
I ask one final question.
Absolutely.
I, I'm just curious as to why we haven't seen the applicant at these meetings? Mary Castner is the applicant. Usually the applicant attends the meetings. Is there a reason why we are not seeing the applicant?
I don't think Mary's the applicant.
I think she was.
The only reason I say I'm not sure that Mary is is because the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers study has a different applicant's name on it.
Well, who is the applicant?
It's Mary and, and Milda Castner.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So Milda's acting on behalf of Mary. I mean, they both own the properties right there, so.
But neither has been at a meeting.
Yeah, so I, I would like to speak to that. I mean, you know, Milda's agreed to, to, to move forward with this project. She's enthusiastic about the dam removal. We've answered many of the same questions that you have raised, some of the questions you've raised this evening. So she's very much a partner, but we're mindful of her time. So, you know, we're kind of, we're, we are moving this project forward and with Milda's full understanding and support. But if she's needed at any meeting, I mean, I think the meeting that Jake was at a couple of weeks ago, I guess we didn't anticipate the flurry of questions that came about. So we were a little bit taken aback by that. I mean, these are all legitimate questions that you had, so.
Milda did intend to be at the sidewalk this evening as well. And we've been trying to make an effort to, I think we've rescheduled one specifically because she couldn't make the first date that was proposed. So we are trying to get her involved.
Yeah, plenty of clarification presented. I thought I understood, but now I'm confused. On your application, Jacob, it shows you as the applicant, Mary is the owner's.
That's correct.
Later in the thing, so.
That's correct.
They would be the applicant for, for the reserve and moving this project forward, maybe. You're ready?
I'm actually kind of baffled because I, I'm looking at three different permit applications and not a one of them has the same person on it.
We're working in partnership with the Sevago Chapter of Trout Unlimited.
Right, which is on the NRPA permit.
Yep.
On the one for the town of Arundel, the applicant is you. And for the Department of the Army permit, the applicant is the Sevago Chapter of Trout Unlimited. Why do we have three different applicants on it, on these permits? Why don't we just have one?
Because we've been partnering and sharing out responsibility for permitting. So actually, the Trout Unlimited was taking responsibility for all of the permitting. But then they, the guy that we were working with, Steve Hines, was not available to complete the Arundel pre-application, so I took over for him.
Okay. It just, it just looks funny.
It's a partnership. It's a diverse partnership.
Yes, but usually a partnership also has the names listed instead of just having a sole, like in a partnership, a lawyer.
There was no room on the form for additional.
That's true, there's only room.
Also included letters of support for all partners.
There's much more room in bigger ones.
Okay.
This is definitely the pre-app.
We can't wait.
I bet you can't.
Does the board have anything else?
Have we given clear direction? Do you, do you know?
Well, I'd still like to have clarification on my initial question was what type of permit I'll be applying for, I guess. Would it be a shore and zone permit, a minor development, maybe a zone, just sort of? Those are going to.
Well, whether it's a minor development or not, because it's, it has to come before the board because, because you don't fit the criteria of what we call a minor development. So you have to come here.
But in, in terms of fees and so forth, I mean, that, that's for staff to decide.
Yeah, it's a circular kind of thing because all, all, all shoreline, it's technically a shoreline zone permit, but all shoreline zone permits are conditional use permits, so.
But when we submit our application, you have to submit a fee with it, so I'm trying to make clarification.
It's going to be the same, it's going to be the same.
The $2.50.
$2.50?
No, I guess $3.50.
$5.00.
Like we have to.
I will go and look to see if there's anything different on the, the fee is not in the ordinance. So I will look at the application, which I don't have currently, to see if, if there's a lesser fee for shoreline, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you, do you need any other guidance, Rob? Anything we can help you with?
So our next step, just so I'm clear, is that we will communicate with TAD on the specifics of the application. We'll complete that application, then we'll get on another meeting agenda.
Is this correct?
Yeah. For the sidewalk too.
And once you, once you've given us the completed application, we will schedule some time. At that point, I think it would help if Milda were available so we could work out the time because it.
And height.
And, and height. But it would, it would help if she were here so that, because if she wants to be there, we don't want to schedule something and then that interferes with an activity that she has.
Marty, if I had to understand, you would prefer this at high tide or low tide?
Low. Reason is, if you're going to be down, downstream, down the stream of it, you don't want to go waiting. Okay, as, as we were told before, bring our hip boots.
Hey, what we really need to do, we're going to be fine.
Well, then the other question also to ask you is a thought. Access on either side of it for visibility or anything else? Is, because one side might be wetter than the other.
Yeah, so we were at the site yesterday. The easiest access to actually get to physically next to the dam is through fairly dry. It's a patch of Japanese knotweed, which fortunately right now is not grown to its whole height.
Okay.
The best view of the dam without actually walking through that area is from the bridge. It's prob, if you wanted to actually wade up in the stream itself, it would be kind, I think it would be probably kind of difficult just because of the brush and whatnot. But I think the easiest access is from Mary Castner's property.
Because when I looked at the bridge, I had been buying, okay? It looked like it was from the development, okay? Access to the dam. Easiest is through Mary Castner.
Yeah, the easiest access is, is the, the banks at the bridge itself are, are something like this and they're covered with prickers and thorns and whatnot. My suggestion is to access through the, through the path that we've been using on Mary's property.
Okay.
You broke in the path. You broke it to trail.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we can even go down prior to the sidewalk and, and try to clean up the brush a little bit because it is kind of difficult to get through that.
And we will be able to.
I think from my perspective, again, probably the most important part when you get into the other one are the environmental impacts, the, the fish species, some of the wildlife that you have, the studies have been in there. And the other description of, as Ted had brought out, best practice of doing these things or that process. I think that's the information I've been.
That, that's encouraging to us because we can buy that information.
Thank you very much, Robert.
Thank you.
Great. And we will move on to the next item. Cape Arundel Preserve Site Plan Application. Proposal for construction of a 5,500 square foot community center with associated recreational leisure facilities, road access and onsite parking located off Patriots Way, property located at 1976 Cortlandt Road in the B, I, S, O, and R, P zones. Arundel Kenny Bunk Port Cottage Preserve LLC is the owner applicant and Rick Light is the applicant's agent. Don't look like Rick Light. I've seen you before.
I'm Ms. Quentin.
Good evening, folks.
Hi, Joe.
Thank you for waiting.
Yes.
Yeah, we're, we're, Joe, we quit it.
All right, so we'll quit for you. Leslie Fanger is with BSC Group, a landscape architect, and I think you've also known him, White. He's the director of marketing and sales. Rick Light apologizes, but he had a conflict, he had to be at another planning board meeting tonight. So we're going to basically take you through what's going on with the community center. So just a, it most likely will have to come back in a few weeks to submit the subdivision plan amendment, which deals with, for example, we've removed the pumping station now because we did it with KKWW, folks who you know. So that's going to be coming off. This is where the new proposed sales and model office is going to be versus where it was shown here. And then this is parking and future parking for visitors. And let's see, what else will we have here? And of course, this is the now revised community center perimeter, which has been reduced. So we're impacting a smaller area. Also to conserve, will have less pervious. And basically what we are trying to do is, is lessons learned to show you, is try to save some of the outcroppings of the ledge and things like that so we can work within it and build a five foot in one. And Leslie will show you those things as well. Also, what will happen is on this plan that we'll submit eventually for you folks to approve is we're going to change it from October 31st closing to December 31st. So some of those things need to be attended to again, then it'll be incorporated, then we'll report it. So with that, Leslie, would you like to talk about the community center?
Just one question, Joe. Joe, there's one question, can you give me a bearing mark where Route One is?
Right here.
Okay, that's.
That's our main entrance.
Yeah, 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 that's what I thought it was, but I just wanted to.
And that's the 9.2 acres up here, commercial property. And that would be the future entrance to that 9.2 acres.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Leslie?
I thought there was only one small lot in the front that was commercial.
That is.
The 9.2 acres right here.
Well, that was. It's much larger scale.
That's why I call it the natural gas pipeline down there, so you can put in your own filling station out there.
There you go.
My air.
Serve all the residents?
No.
Commercial properties, you think you're gonna have up there?
Hello, are you being square footage on the 9.2 acres yet? Rick and I did some preliminary things because of restrictions of septic system. Somewhere around 1,000 square feet maybe?
Oh, okay.
Okay. And if we're looking at a couple of buildings or place 120,000 square foot building with the ability to add on, so those things we'll be working on, and we'll be coming to see you folks again on that soon, hopefully.
Thanks, Joe. Again, I'm Leslie Fanger, I'm the project landscape architect, and since Rick could be here, I'll do my best to fill in for him. So as Joe had mentioned earlier, here's Route One, and we have Founders Drive coming in. We'll have the sales office, and eventually there'll be a roundabout here. And just beyond the roundabout is where the community center was. Now, on the original permit, the community center footprint was much larger. We've reduced it by about 30%. And with that, reduce the amount of impervious area that will be included as well. So this is a rendering of the revised community center. Just to orient you, I said the roundabout here, and we come in Founders Way. We arrive at a one-way entrance and exit that also has two accessible parking spaces and about 23 cart parking spaces. Now, I know that you know about the three-season lifestyle, right? So, we envision most everyone using their own golf carts or bikes. We have the eastern trail right nearby, so the number of parking spaces for standard parking is to allow for the employees and the occasional person who wants to drive up. Let's see. Now, Joe mentioned earlier, we've reduced the amount of developed area because we're trying to save as much of the natural ledge and forested area as we can. So we're building like a fire pit up into a little ledge knob here, and having a cut ledge face that comes around and a little waterfall into the, into the pool. We may or may not construct these things, but we're showing them just in case we decide at a later time that they weren't building there. The, let's see. We have a large open lawn area that can be also used for overflow parking when there's a larger event. Another fire pit in between some nice ledge outcroppings that, we went out there and did a detailed survey of the area because wanted to make sure we captured where those were located, so that they were saved. Also, we have bocce courts and shuffleboard courts, nice hot tub, and the main building elevation, it's in keeping with a main character. And we have a nice little silo is bringing in that farming community sort of feel. Can show you some more details of that community center if you'd like?
May I?
Yes.
That's about 5,500 square feet. And each, you know, each building is going to be connected with a covered walkway. Though the extreme right, that's strictly exercise area. We'll have equipment in there, and bathrooms, restroom, showers, and things of that nature, but that's purely for exercises.
And this is rear elevation down the bottom, so it enters out onto the patio area. Very, very tastefully done building. Let's see, and the side elevations as well. It, for a large building, which 5,500 square feet is fairly large, it doesn't have a big feel to it, because it's split up into three different buildings. Excuse me. Allergies easy.
True.
I'm happy to answer any questions. Joe, have I missed anything?
Is ADA accessible?
Yep.
Well, that was.
My biggest concern about that, and it doesn't mean anything one way or the other, but, you know, it gets cold around September 14th, and people don't like to, they're gonna drive their cars over there.
They're actually not going to be allowed to drive their cars there, it's only for handicapped vehicles.
Can I just lead you to a, she used to be the marketing assess director for Howard Hall Seaglass, and actually she has a beautiful point, if you have it. Where, that's where they did, and they never had a problem, and still don't have a problem.
Okay. It just, it just amazes me, because.
It's true.
Come on, it's September 14th and it's the summer.
And another thing you kind of want to remember with this, all of these roads are going to have a speed limit that won't exceed 25 miles an hour.
Okay.
Which is fine for 50 feet, but it gets obnoxious if you're trying to run errands. You're out there walking, you're riding in your golf cart. Your association staff will also have golf carts that they can be going and picking people up on the rainy weather days if you don't have the size, when it's colder, things like that.
Okay. I mean, it just raises me a scrap.
That's why this lady, I'm blessed to have her because of this experience.
Oh, I assume that you know what you're doing. I'm just looking at it.
It is, it's because you're on vacation, you don't want to get in the car and go. You're here, you want to relax.
Well, see, I vacation differently.
Okay.
I will get in my car and drive eight hours to look at something.
Well, you come up and visit with me, and I'll teach you how to vacation, okay?
However, once we as the association that will control it for a while leave, and the other association takes over, if they want to change that parking from golf to natural cars or traditional cars, there is, there are ways of doing it. So we've left them room on the west side to move things around and create parking.
That's what I was noticing, that if you need it, you have the experience.
Yes, exactly.
There's a particularly good band playing at the clubhouse, and there are a lot of golf carts coming down. They will be able to safely be on that area, but that's not.
So you left Tony Bennett coming in there, just won't be.
Wouldn't that be nice?
We have some good bands today.
Any question?
Yes, Marty.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, there are going to be 200 plus units?
259.
Okay, 259. And let's say if mommy and daddy, okay, wanted to all come up to the clubhouse. Is there enough room for 259 times two people to be there? Just.
Within, within the, the complex?
No, for the clubhouse or?
That's what I'm saying, within the clubhouse?
Yeah.
It's been designed for that.
Okay.
It meets fire code.
I mean, now, I'm just.
No, no, but I agree with you.
I mean.
You have to meet those fire rules and regs and requirements. So, one of the things that the architect did, Suzie, you have to look at that to make sure that it works.
Another question is, okay, you got your shuffleboard, you got your pool or anything else. Do you have anything else for some of these either activities for? I mean, what I'm wondering is, Joe, is a question like tennis court?
Oh, yeah, tennis courts, it's not shown here.
I just looked at it for, since you have like your shower rooms or whatever outside, is that all part of, like your tennis courts or anything else? Or is that another episode? You know, because I know how you want to try to put everything together, thinking of usefulness.
Are you, if you recall, we have a septic system leaching area?
Yes.
Which is grassed over.
Yes.
In that area, we're going to have tennis courts and a tennis and basketball court, and a softball field. Those things are there. Now, also, this building right here is kind of dedicated to game, like ping pong ball, things of that nature, maybe a pool table. So that's what that is for, for example. Okay, so, yes, but along the way, as we get into like phase three, four, we'll probably end up putting another pool somewhere, probably possibly adding other tennis courts, basketball courts, because as we see the.
Convenience.
Yeah, to make a convenience, and people have something closer to that. So that will be coming as we also experience questions, statements from potential buyers when they come.
Their input.
And their input, because one of the questions, oh, several of the questions that Kim asked of people, this is what we have to offer, and they hung a ha, and said, well, what else should they? Don't forget, we also have the eastern trail. We have a hundred-foot buffer all the way around, which we end up having about 300 acres. Within that hundred-foot buffer, we have the right, we did get permission, to do walking trails, exercise trails. We also have close to 50 some odd acres on the west, northwestern side of Patriots Way that has been put in protection, open space. That has walking trails and top. So there's a lot of things that can happen there. The other thing that is not shown here, and I'll go back to, what was it? The original plan that I showed you. One of the things we're trying to do is keep people from using their cars. So what we have done is created right here for minibuses, unless I can get the trolley. I was told that if I don't need a trolley, I'm gonna get trolley service. So, they would come in and pick up people and take them to restaurants, to beaches, to shopping centers. And if we can't do it with a trolley, we would be doing it with minibuses. So that's the kind of environment that we're trying to create for the community.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, Joe, I have a couple, couple of questions, and I'm gonna go back to the last meeting that I attended, if there's been one in the interim, and you all have decided something to update on it. Obviously respecting the plans that have come here. At that, at that meeting, the board expressed two major concerns, in my opinion, and I agreed with them. And that was meeting the minimum parking requirements for, for the town, for, because two just, and I'm just telling you how I feel. Two just does not seem like that's going to get us anywhere. But perhaps the biggest question in my mind was the safety and the traffic flow. Separating, I know you're, you keep saying that all of the golf carts are gonna come down and they're gonna park. Well, guess what? People are also going to be going to their houses.
Sure.
So we had asked for what kind of separation, what is in place, you know, some sort of documentation. I mean, it's, it's fine to save anything, but I'm not sure I'm 100% comfortable with 200 cars going one way and, or 100 cars going one way and the other 100 coming back the other way on carts, all on the same road. 25 miles is quite fast.
We may, we may.
It's 15.
We use that.
Okay.
It's 15, not 25.
I feel a little bit bitter on that side, because 25 is really not fast, but.
And it's 35 on one way.
And 15, that's a scope 15, you know, or.
Would you have a sidewalk?
I don't.
Would you have a sidewalk?
Is that cart, is that built for carts, or is that built only for pedestrians?
For pedestrians, no carts.
Yeah, see, you haven't built it yet.
But the, the road is wide enough, we did look at the.
The main road is wide enough, of course, it's really wide enough, okay?
Silly another question, Joe. Your golf carts, are they all electric?
Yes.
Hey, hey, just. Okay, I'm still gonna remain concerned, I tell you. I hear you telling me that it's like, and that you looked at it, but in the reviews that I've done, I see no study about traffic flow whatsoever. I see no reason to believe that there's not a car going this way, a car going that way, as well as two carts going in the opposite directions all at the same time. I don't see any, any control.
Can I just?
First, and again, this is from a safety of.
Experience, knowledge, six years, and it's worked, there've been no incidents, problems, people haven't complained. And really, it's basically also people accepting a way of life. North Carolina, South Carolina, similar situations, and I have a sister-in-law and brother-in-law that live there, they have golf carts. They have over 500 people that live there. Their roads are much smaller than ours that we're proposing here. And those folks come and go, cars slow down. They just pass off, let the people go and do their thing, and it works, it really works. It kind of like gets you in a very calming environment, instead of always going fast. So, if in fact it didn't work, we wouldn't get the sales. So if we're to a point then in our sales and marketing that it doesn't work, then we probably look at alternatives. Like I said, we made provisions to get more parking in front of the community center if we had.
You have two, yeah, but you said you only have two spaces there right now for cars.
Because that's what we're trying to do, is create that lifestyle, but if we had to change it, we can.
How about a handicap?
We have a handicap, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I heard you only had two parking.
Sorry, I wasn't clear.
Traditional cars.
These are the accessible parking spaces right here.
And is that for a car?
Yes, two, two full-size standard cars and three standard cars for employees and people who really can.
Those two are, those two are handicapped?
No, these, these are accessible, yes.
We won't have employees parking in the front, most likely.
So what this is, these are handicap accessibles? Right here?
No, if, if those three spots aren't for parking for employees, where are they parked?
Employees?
The employees are parking down here.
They're taking a golf cart to work.
Okay, no. Because then they can walk. Basically, those folks will be parking down here. By the way, that's further expansion of the visitors' parking. So, and we're gonna have it set up so that even though it's not paved, we can park cars on it. So that's where we put our employees, down there, and let them walk, basically. That's, that's the game plan right there, no employees inside with their cars, except if they're gonna take potential buyers there, okay, and visitors, and we need to show the space to.
I'm very silly.
I'm not trying to be argumentative.
Oh, no, no, just.
If you don't have the answers, then we'll get them for you.
When you're driving a golf cart, state law does require you have to be a licensed driver, and you do have to follow the same rules. Although this is a private property and that isn't so much. Owners, as soon as you've sold more than one pottage, they lease themselves. You also have staff on site. So if someone is driving it appropriately, it's very well-known in a community such as these.
Would that include somebody just pulling up and parking in their, in their sedan or?
Very much so, anywhere on the property.
Right in front of the, the clubhouse and?
Exactly, yeah. So for instance, these are your two parking spots, and you've got four friends who come over and park here. There's staff in the area that has to be taken care of and.
Okay, so there would be some, some type of enforcement.
So, exactly, and that's something that as we grow, the staffing grows to accommodate it.
Also, the rules and regulations, condo association, the condo docs are stipulated, because part of the purchase and sale agreement, so they know from day one what is required of them.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Very specific, which we have, and we are working on the condo docs, the rules and regs, which we have to bring to you folks. Hopefully, we will have them to you in the next couple of weeks, that's our goal right now.
Another question, if I could just follow up. Do you flip to a shoe larger scale? Do you have the grassy area for overflow? How would a car get in there?
Through here.
Through the tree?
We've also talked about up in this area, making provisions up in this area, because when you have condo association meeting, once you're into the 200-fo, occupants, you're gonna need space. We've talked about it. So beyond this point, there's a lot of green. So beyond this point, there's a lot of green area, which we can park on.
Which is subgrade to park on, Joe?
I'm sorry?
What are you gonna use for subgrade, you're not gonna park down the lawn?
There'll be some subgrade underneath it, gravel and material and stuff, but it still will have grass. That's the whole thing, okay, we must have grass, we want it grassed, but also.
Don't think of a seasonal standard for. That's just a, yeah, it's, it's. Fresh stone.
Yes.
Yeah, the overflow parking up by.
They're painted green, the stone.
No, we'd rather, honestly, we'd rather fix the grass. Because when is it gonna happen?
Yeah.
Once a year, okay, because some people will walk to it, they won't drive.
Yes, no, people, most will walk.
Most people will walk. But there are people with handicap.
They're frisky.
Providing provisions.
He earned his license.
That's right.
Question, one other thing. Through being seasonal, okay? As you know only too well, what seasons we get into the fall.
Yes.
Okay? If in the event, and like I said, I'm just asking this for nosiness or anything else. If you had to plow or anything else, do these golf carts also have chains or anything else from going slip-sliding around? Or do, I mean, I'm just thinking of traction.
I understand what you're saying, and I think you will find that there won't be two hundred and fifty-nine occupants in, in November in this summer. That's really, we extended it by those two months, and I think that you will find the people that are there. And I don't know what the percentage was or how it was, because we closed it in October anyway.
Right, but off the top of my head, October, I'm gonna say thirty percent of the people will.
Well, like I said, you might have more November-wise, because you have a lot of them. Because you got the, the pre-Christmas, pre-rose and everything else, and the fourth.
Craft fairs, and this area, people will be coming for long weekends, definitely.
But I'm just was wondering, under your golf cart scenario.
Yeah.
Okay? And, because I've never played with them, okay? The fact is, how does they handle more or less on your weather conditions or anything else?
Most, okay, first of all, what happens is, all of the amenities back here get closed down, okay? There's no amenities whatsoever, they get closed down, come on.
You aren't gonna go swim into the pool either.
Right.
Unless you have a big hot tub.
So there is, there's minimal use of the community center, it really is. There may be people that are going to go and exercise, all right? And we're gonna make a determination as, as people move in and use space. If we have to modify our parking plan to put in some additional parking for traditional cars, we can do that.
Yeah, I realize that.
So it behooves us to pay attention to what the needs are of the buyers, the, the owners. We're gonna make those modifications. Right now, based on our knowledge and what we're trying to do, we feel that this works. If it doesn't, for example, parking, we can park here. I mean, we have, we will create so that it looks nice, it's not just.
Well, I, I.
I don't wanna put in, we have enough pavement.
Yeah.
I'd like to give as much green as we possibly can. I mean, this is even an outdoor yoga area, for example. And it's screened very nicely, so that on beautiful days, people can go outside and do their yoga. We plan to have health-type people there that will do these things with these folks, okay?
Not like.
Instructors.
Not me.
Instructors, you know? So I think we have taken that into consideration, that if we have to, we will. We will make those modifications.
Okay, we just.
Even across the street, believe it or not, we could do some parking across the street, okay? It, it, it is available for us to do eventually if we need to, for.
I know you, well-planned thought of it, but I'm just saying, I was just thinking, because I don't know the idea of golf carts.
In addition to all of that, we are going to need to plow and maintain the roads.
Yeah.
Exceptionally well, especially when the owners are on site. Um, so you are, and there's always gonna be somebody who's tired of balls.
Oh, yeah.
People are there. However, the majority of golf carts have a very nice tread that is for weather, it's not for ice.
Okay, I didn't know that.
And it's not heavy enough to be on ice. So they're gonna have to use some judgment, but again, for those few situations, the road's going to be.
So I, I'm looking at this, we have.
We don't have any jurisdiction over this.
Well, that's.
Jurisdiction over golf carts or whatever.
But that's, yeah, but that's, that's where, I, I'm curious about.
Supposed to help in safety.
I'm curious about parking spaces. We have requirements for parking spaces, and I'm, I'm looking through the different activities, and I have no clue as to where this would fit in.
Well, parking spaces for the units, you mean?
Colonnial would be commercial recreational.
I, I'm thinking of the lodge specifically, because we define how many spaces for full-sized cars you're supposed to have based upon either the kind of facility that you have or the total number of square, square feet available. And I'm just trying to figure out where this would fit in. If I looked at.
Commercial recreational facility.
The commercial recreational, then you need to have fifty-five spaces.
But he's got much more than that.
But, well, that's, I'm not sure, that's why I'm asking.
Well, yeah, because the facility is the entire development, so you've got, you know, what, five hundred spaces throughout the development. This is not a, a commercial recreational facility, it is the rest of the facility which is associated with the whole.
But that, that's why I'm asking the question, if, if it ever comes up, what are we gonna say? Parking, you can get two cars here. Yeah. Okay, so that's what we've done. Now, it doesn't show the rest of the site, you've seen it, where we have, for example, little villages. Yep. This parking in the center, people walk to their units. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at, so, you know, Marty's best friend, Joe Public, is sitting out here, and he says to us, wait a minute, what are you doing about parking? This guy's got no parking space, and he's got fifty-five hundred square feet, and the ordinance says he should have fifty-five parking spaces. And John's answer, yeah, we've got five hundred parking, okay. I wanted to ask that question because you know somebody's gonna ask it.
Sure.
Well, let me ask you this, Mr. Chairman. If we have a situation where we have a PUD, where we have a mixed-use project, in which we have residential and business on there in the future?
Mm-hmm.
And they, are we, does that mean whenever we have a commercial development or an industrial development in there that we will in fact have accounting the parking spaces in garages?
That would, that would be required? That's, that is a valid question, if we're saying that we can do it here, then why can we not do it someplace else? You have a bylaw, don't you, that said we had to meet the minimum requirement? Which if I remember right, was one point five cars per, something to that effect? Yes.
For a cottage.
For cottage, which we did. Yep. Which then takes in the entire complex, because the entire complex is considered. I, I agree, and, but that goes to the planner's point, where he said, what if this is, if there's a PUD, are we going to count all of the various spaces? And I heard some board, board members go, no.
But we don't.
And, but the question then becomes, this?
We'll have to write it into the.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to, we'll have to make some kind of adjustment to make that determination. I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I just, you know, at, at some point, somebody's gonna ask that question, and we have to be able to answer it.
Absolutely.
So what is the first building going up?
And I think.
As a matter of fact, I took my first building permit Monday, and it's for the sales month.
All right.
And so we're starting, actually, we're, we're digging it Monday morning.
I've got a maze driving by watching the hill disappear.
Fun.
There we go.
Was that part of that first phased approval? Up the main road. You said your building at Monday, you already got an approval for?
The building permit?
Yeah.
The building permit, yes, it's this one right here, that. So this is all been approved. Okay, so.
Joe, what a good question. Since you have such an abundance of it, of, of the site, are you having a rock wall, climbing wall?
Uh, no, but.
Insurance right there, but I will.
Yeah, let's, well, no, we've, we've addressed that. Our purpose here is to look at the, um, community center. And I'm, I'm sorry, I got everybody off track as well.
I was just being.
And it's, I, I like the question, Marty, but we need, we need to go back and, and what else do we need to know about the community center, if anything?
Not how many, not how many bar schools are gonna be here, or how many taps there.
Are we just saying that this, this needs to be considered as a steam-lown building? It's not, it's, it's, all the residents, all the, the units, they, they have their own parking, but this, this building needs to have, or doesn't need to have its own.
I think that's the question. I, I don't think it's a question of, uh, the question I think we as a board need to address, we have approved this, the entire project.
And it was stated, it was in it.
Do we need to have?
It has, it had car parking in it, that's the point.
The first one.
This is an amendment.
This is an amendment, yeah, the first one had plenty of parking.
Right, so we, we have seen a change, but do we need Joe to come back when he does Phase One? Does he have to come back and tell us that he's doing Phase One? When he puts in a swimming pool, does he have to come back and tell us he's putting in these, these other kinds of facilities? Because we've already approved the plan. So my question is.
See, no, like.
No, no, hang on, my question is, do we need to have him come back unless he's making some kind of a change?
Mr. Chairman, so I believe, um, under the original agreement, the, the approved plat, there was a note, note number two, that said that, um, we have to come back before the planning board with the final plan for the community center for a de minimis review, I guess it's like.
Okay.
Is that, so that's why we're here.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and generally, de minimis reviews are handled by staff that we requested the board.
Sorry, I didn't make that clear.
No, you're perfectly, and you're right.
Yeah, didn't you have?
You know, can I just, just do like a little summary?
I'm a big boy.
So there was, this, this, the original approval had certain number of parking spots that, uh, that were available, and, and that's changed, and so that's our issue. But, uh, we, according to our ordinance, this doesn't quite meet our requirements for the number of parking spots and how we look at it.
Okay.
But if it's, that's based on a full vehicle. We, these are all, I, I don't know how many are out there.
Golf carts about twenty-six.
So let's say that would meet the number, but it's, we don't have anything to, to allow for those smaller. We, we have something on the books that's similar to that, and that's motorcycle, uh, spots. And I don't know if maybe a way around this is to make another, another standard for golf cart type.
I didn't ask that, well, kind of, we're not like to this one.
In this aspect, I think John is absolutely correct when he says, there's already five hundred plus parking spaces available on the property. There's, there's two for almost every cottage.
But that, that, that's serving the, the housing units.
Okay.
Those aren't serving, also serving the, um, the clubhouse or where the community has.
Yeah, but not everybody's gonna go to the clubhouse, at one time.
Does it matter that each one of the unit owners, the clubhouse is owned entirely by them? That's theirs to be walking to anyway? It's not, at our original approval?
I think what, what may answer be, uh, maybe, but, the way I'm seeing it is, for the, the events that everybody wants to show up, where are they all gonna park? So you're not gonna say, so you have to walk all of those of you a quarter mile behind, you have to walk, because there's no spot to put your, your golf carts, never mind full vehicle.
That's where the staffing comes in and has to do it. But I guess I'm just, my question is.
Well, beyond that too, we've made arrangements to park cars here.
Yeah.
And this may not show exactly what's gonna take place.
And that's probably mine.
We'd probably, we'd definitely be able to get cars in here. That's something we discussed. For example, let's say it's inclement weather, they're not all gonna fit in here. So basically, they're gonna be bringing in tents, okay? So that they will be undercover, so those tents will be bringing in. At the same time, we're gonna make provisions for parking for those people.
And, and I like, personally, I'd rather not see pavement everywhere.
That's what we're trying to.
So I, I like that, I like that better, but how does it fulfill our, our ordinance?
I, I believe that based on what we did with the original parking requirements we do, because this is part of the entire complex, it doesn't stand alone.
Do you, do you also believe?
I don't even have to build this, that's the thing, we do not have to build a community center.
Sure.
If we don't want to, we didn't have to. Some people build community centers, and there's no parking anywhere near them. Really true, I've seen them.
Would you use that same logic for the commercial lot down below? That's all part of the same development.
No, that's different, that's separate, that's not part of this condo association, that's totally separate. Absolutely.
That, that I remember, that I remember. We'll be back.
We are coming back, though.
No, I've talked to you about that.
As a matter of fact, we have to come back probably for the ninety-plus acres in the back someday, so we are coming back. All right, so, uh, we have to deal with that separately as well.
I, I would like to commend you, Joe, on, on your utilization of natural features. I mean, it looks very appealing to me in the way that you're working with the outcroppings, and I just, I find it very well done.
I can't take all the credit, because that's what I wanted, but per Artic Street, and actually Rick Light as well, and they all participate.
Teamwork.
Yes, teamwork is right, my, teamwork, yeah, so.
But it's, it's very, very nicely done, I think.
And I like your stone wall, the squares facing of the wall, right?
That's, that will transition into a more refined terrace walls as it approaches the view from Portland Street.
Well, like I said, you, you have an abundance of it to turn on it, to, uh, to paint the face.
Too much, does anybody want stone?
They can throw a size. We actually need some.
Come again. Is there anything else that, that we need to know about this?
What size accurate are you making?
Anything that you can think of that we should address?
Make the three. You're gonna have to make a motion, you have to do something about the parking, you have to do something, make some sort of formal statement about that parking. Because it does meet our current standards, so you have to do something about that. Okay, so, A, that's A. B, what level of review are we looking at here when it says de minimis? Are you guys, is this sufficient? Do we need to have a public hearing? Do we need to do anything else? Because this is new, new ground, and what you do here is gonna set precedent for others, so, um, I'm handling a lot of the de minimis changes between Rick and I, but this is probably the biggest one we're gonna have to deal with.
Okay, so I think we've got, we've got two issues, and let's take them one at a time. The first is the question of, is this sufficient for de minimis change? Or?
No.
The issue for him to come to us with like that and the.
Is this a site plan? Is this a site plan? Is this supposed to be a site plan that's within this? Because this is a bigger project, this has never been really well-defined in, in the approval process. Is this sufficient, or do you need more information?
I think myself.
Marty?
I think this is more than efficient, because with the drawings and everything else, just not there, but what was presented, with the sketches and everything else, it details everything that is going to be done.
Bob?
Yeah, I have two, two basic times. I believe in the original discussions, and they've changed a couple of times, so I said discussions. When we changed the various phasing on this, we also said at the start of each phase, when you were finishing, we were gonna look at the phase and what went into the phase before the board. Is that not correct? So at the beginning of each phase, it would come. I would think, I would think staff would be able to, just like you did here, okay? This is, this is, if, if there's a little bit more impact, maybe I don't wanna take the whole thing on my shoulder or, or staff, and I think it's appropriate to have them come before the board. So I think at the beginning of each phase, at a, at, at a minimum, and as staff, as the applicant, or as, should there be issues? You know, if needed, I, I think it should be staff if you want typically.
Well, that's okay, because they control the paycheck, right, Joe?
Yeah, you guys already have, you already have the documents and the.
I don't know, but the allocations of that, but I, yeah.
You're ready to stop, and then you've got everyone. You know, that's already there.
John?
I believe this is sufficient, I would like to see only one additional detail, and that is to sketch out where potential future parking might be.
Sure.
Uh, but to me, it, it makes perfect sense to do it this way, especially considering the lifestyle and considering that it's been proven to work in other locations. But just in case, we need, need to make provisions for that overflow parking in case it doesn't go well.
Sure.
And as long as you can document that, I'm happy with it.
And let's, is there any documentation from these other places that there is no, that there isn't problems? I know, I know that you were there, I know that, I know that you were there. My job is to review, my job is to review the document. My job is to review, my job is to review the documents you could make and make a decision.
I believe the town of Wells would be the ones to go to for that. If there have been any issues I'm not aware of, no. As far as documentation, no.
You'd be able to get, if fire rescue had to respond, you'd be able to get documentation that says they had to go X number of times. We're not gonna know the details about who or what, but they'd be able to say, yeah, you know, we had, we had four golf cart collisions in two years, so we had to go out and respond to them. To me, that would be the kind of documentation that we would...
But that's not what we're concerned about. We're concerned about, is there sufficient parking?
Right here. And where else?
I don't know how that would be documented.
Your question, your statement about us going in and out?
The owners of similar properties should be able to provide you with that information.
Oh, so you mean that type of a personal doc, I was thinking of an official documentation. I could certainly contact some of the previous owners and ask for...
I think an owner of a like project, yeah, an owner of a like project could be considered an expert.
Well, there's gotta be something else, and that wasn't the only one that's ever been done. So if you did some more...
Well, no, between Seaglass Village, Summer Village, I mean, there's, all these places, none of them have parking.
Something to make, something where we can say, hey, there has been, this has been looked at. Not, not excludes your own personal experience, that's, that's very valuable, and you're an expert in this here as well. However, we need some documentation, I, I'm not speaking for anybody, I would like some additional.
Okay, the question you asked, may I, about showing you additional parking, when and if it's required? We can do that, okay? That's one. I believe that selling out, they're sold out at Seaglass with that kind of a design concept, it speaks for itself. You wanna know from the folks, as a matter of fact, we have some folks that are golf camp, that are living there, wanna move here. Okay, so, and they know what's going on here, so they're okay with it. So, I mean, those are the kind of things that we can tell you, the facts, getting some of the folks that live there talking about golf carts. You can get that?
I can, I can make a bunch of love to visit.
So it's fair of just being a site plan, I think, of course, this is sufficient for me, I think, a lot of detail, yeah. So that's one issue. The other is, I think I agree with John with that, but I would like to go one step further. On this, I would like to see it labeled where the overflow is. Right now, I think all will be approved, and it's just the little turnaround.
Right here?
Yeah, and not indicating where the extra parking could be. And I still see no way to access that, that excess parking.
Well, actually, this is, you know, papers, you can drive over papers. As a matter of fact, the circle that Leslie was talking about, when I do that, that will be done in such a fashion that when you get the big trucks, furniture or others, they'll be able to drive on that circle. I've done it before. But it's still be, okay, so basically, that's what it is. You drive over it, it's fine. It's not a normal front prop, which is, so, yeah, Marty.
Joe, you have this, on this sketch, okay? This is A dash one dash one. You have these squares around here. Are those basically parking?
No, those are, no, those are lounges from the pool.
I didn't know that was, I was just thinking...
I don't believe we've ever had shown any parking on the park.
I know, I was just wondering if that was, to answer the question, I was thinking...
Okay.
That was original layout.
On the, on this site plan, can I get a motion that indicates whether we're happy with it or not happy with it? No, we...
I, I emotionally accept it.
Okay, Marty's made a motion that we accepted. Do I get a second?
With, well, I would like to add with, with some indication of overflow parking.
Okay, with overflow parking for the future.
Does that mean approve, just so we know?
What?
Does the word except mean approve?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Either it's yay or nay.
Okay, do I, can I have a second?
Yes, I'll say.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to approve this, this site plan sketch?
This...
Concept, because you had everything else they wrote in there.
This is...
Site plan amendment. Site plan amendment, thank you very much. Okay.
Provided it shows overflow parking.
Provided that it shows overflow parking.
How much of it shows?
All those in favor?
How much overflow, how many spaces do you want them to provide?
Okay.
Yes.
John, you say yes? I said yes. Tom? Bob?
No.
Okay, four to one. The next issue?
Not against you.
No taking.
Against the plan.
No taking. I forgot what the next issue was. Do it.
The question was, do we need to have it by us or our staff review? That was the next question.
I make motion that in the future reviews be at the beginning of each phase, and that each major change is determined by the town planner or staff.
You did that last time, by the way.
Yeah.
Which you're reiterating, so that's great.
Okay, so we already have that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, then we don't, we don't need to do again?
Well, I said it, but I didn't think they took a vote.
Well, take a vote now, Bob. Let's make it official.
Somebody give me a second.
Everybody's doing this stuff, I don't care. You don't care?
No, make it, no, I do care. Why don't you continue with that?
What's the distinction between the planning office and coming here?
Well, the planning...
Planning board will say that at the beginning of each approved phase, in this, the major development. And then the planning board will say at any time that any of the staff feel that it's appropriate, come to.
And also the applicant has to come to the board instead of staff.
Okay, so a motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to have the applicant come before the planning board at the start of each phase and subject to staff saying that, that whatever changes, it's too big, it needs to go to... Oh, not, not field changes. They're gonna take one of their changes to staff, the de minimis changes.
Staff field changes.
Okay.
This isn't the field change.
No, this, this is not. I'm just saying for staff review.
The motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor? All those opposed, it's unanimous.
All right.
Question?
Yes.
We are working right now on phase one and phase two.
Okay.
Basically, they started blasting phase two. Now, at what point do we come before you folks on phase two, if we need to come back?
Beginning of any time.
To start construction of, are we talking buildings or roads?
Yeah, because we're building the roads now.
I thought it was...
Phase two.
We have, we...
The layout was already there for the approval for the road.
And it was, but it was considered to be a separate phase when we, when we talked.
True.
So we gave approval for the road, once the road is done, we're back, then you're back to the regular phasing that was in there before. Right, or Joe agree with it?
Well, okay, for example, this is phase one that we're working on right now. The system through here, basically, okay, and the second system, that's phase one. Phase two is across the street. Phase one is thirty-one units, phase two is thirty-two units.
And it may be, it may be nothing more than there is one little change from, from the beginning. Or like this one, with, with staff and collaboration, you may say, hey, this is a better idea, it looks a little better. We changed it a lot.
So before I call a building permit for phase two, then you folks can make that determination. Now, we basically can say to Ted, his phase two, the layout that was approved has not changed. Nothing has changed. Then he makes the decision whether or not I come to you folks or not, or do I come no matter what? Based on the motion that we just had, I come no matter what. Okay, before I call the building permit to build a unit, okay?
Yeah, just keep it clear.
Okay, so I'm, I'm clear on that.
Yeah.
Now, how many, when are you gonna have phase one done? Are they gonna be all filled this year?
We're trying to. Three of them are gonna be models. Kims and then three others are gonna be modeled. So that leaves with twenty-eight. We're hoping that by next...
You got twenty-six of them already sold?
We have some that people want to purchase, but until we have the condo docs, the rules and regs and all that, it's hard to give them a complete package. So that's why we're deliberately working on that right now, so. And hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have that package being posted, because that's one of the requirements, being posted later.
Yeah.
And, and, and approval and that's good. Joe, thank you very much.
Our pleasure, thank you.
Joe, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Good seeing you again.
Nice seeing you.
I agree with John and with the idea.
Your voice is a lot softer than it is.
Yeah, I don't need to cover anymore.
We need to, before we leave, we have a mile out that we have to sign.
For whom? For whom?
I believe it's the champion.
Okay.
And...
We get close to signing.
Several things while we do this?
You put it right there so we get a sign.
Yes. The town plan, or, yeah, we just set it up.
I didn't want you to go through the bathroom on that, and then...
The layout, I'm just gonna...
I'm telling you, we have...
All right. Checking the nature. All of the things that's covered.
So we got, just a motion?
No, 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 I was hoping.
And you can have all of that.
Right there.
So, after, you might want to keep this, because this is the question.
All day. That's all the phase is finished for the road.
Okay.
And then you have a mile to turn back.
While you guys are signing, did anybody find anything that was, did I capture everything I needed to on this? On the changes for the public hearing? Any changes that missed?
The same warning, yes.
You did a good job.
Yeah, yeah, all right, so I published that now.
That cool?
Web segment, publish it, and then select.
Okay. Thank you, good night.
Good night, y'all.
Good night, y'all.
You want that to be loud? No, thanks. Do you have any report papers? Uh, the one I do have, let's see, we have, we have, don't forget, we have a public hearing next week. This is the last one, before warrant, you have to make a decision at the end of the evening whether to remand this up to the, to the selectmen for that meeting, so they take it to warrant.
The selectmen already had a motion to bring off fourteen.
Yes, the selectmen have all fourteen on the warrant, but you still have to, have to remand it to them in case there's any changes, if you want something that's...
John, how about this middle one with left blank? I didn't get there.
Oh, gentlemen, I would say that at next week's meetings, if we make any changes, we can't take it to the warrant.
No, what I'm saying is, no, you can't.
Wait until next year.
Yeah. Also, I would request that they, everybody phone up on your ordinances, go over them, so that when citizens ask you questions, you can respond. I know it's been a long time since you remember some of these ordinances, you may forget what's in them, so I know it's a really exciting reading, but if you would phone up on it, go through your blue books, see what you did, look at the files, which I will send you another digital copy and make hard copies for you as well. Make sure you have a clearer idea of what's in it and what you did, what the board decided on, so. So, so you can answer any questions the public should ask, I shouldn't be doing them wrong.
At the town meeting, you know, I think the board will phone you.
Usually does, but I mean, the board will be there, and it helps quite a bit if you ask people. Okay, so, has a lot more weight with the public.
I'm not sure. You have very good talker, and you can go and do a hell of a work, and, yeah.
We should, but, you know, the citizens, they're the guys who made the decisions, and so, that's, that's where that's...
Question?
Yes.
Can we, or you, or somebody, turn out, get the word out, like we've turned out and post, uh, warrant, example, saying around the market, J and S, Wicks, or whatever else that, a piece of paper saying there's a public hearing?
It's already been sent.
To?
All the, all of the property owners in the district.
No, I didn't say to the property owners, I'm asking to, where people usually gather.
No, I don't, I can't do that. If you guys wanna go do that, you can, but I can't post town things on private property.
We've done it before, because that's where they post all the warrants.
Other people, the other people have that.
You guys wanna grab that and do that?
No, I'm just saying, because when the warrants are posted, they're posted in certain stores.
Marty, you're saying if you wanna do that, we can do it.
I can't, I...
But the town does it already.
Well, I don't think the town does it, I think people post warrants that the town, the town issues. We don't get into that because A, it's on private property, and B, we'll miss somebody and offend them. So we only post on public property, that's how we do it, the staff won't. And there's only so much time we've got too, quite honestly. So if you, if any of you folks wanna do that, that's terrific.
If it goes to every individual house, why, no, I'm asking a question. It goes to, if you get one at your house, why would you need one at we, I'm just asking a question.
Because that we wouldn't, but I'm just saying, for like the last public hearing, okay? Very simple, last public hearing, it might have been posted in the newspaper, or maybe it might have been posted on the web, but not everybody reads the newspaper, and not everybody reads the web. So if, as we've had warrants posted...
I know they used to be posted.
Just saying, public hearing, middle of the day school, that's all, I mean, not, not details.
Feel free, I can't go and post it in every business.
I didn't say every business, but we posted them before.
Okay, right off the...
And the deputy, and the constable used to do them.
Well, we don't have a constable, and you're welcome to ask the selectmen to do that, okay?
Okay.
Phil, do you remember being at that?
What I remember is that the town has strategic locations that they post town meeting, and anything else, I don't know. But I knew they had...
Yeah.
Strategic places that they posted for the town meeting every year. Used to be where Holly's is today, I don't know if it still is, Rundle Market.
There was Rainbow Market?
Yeah, Rainbow and any others, I don't remember, or no.
That's all I'm saying.
They were, but I haven't seen them up quite a number of years. But you're right, I remember, you know, when, when it was the Valero Station, and it was a convenience store, you'd see them every now and then.
Okay, I, two of the things, Mr. Chairman. One is that we have, we're gonna have a bunch of subdivisions coming in pretty soon. I've already received two applications, and probably a third coming in. So we're gonna be seeing some subdivisions coming in pretty quickly. And also, I don't know if you received from the town manager yet, but you will be receiving from him or from me. You have a freedom of information, several freedom of informations that have been requested by DuBois, and...
I didn't have anything, so I didn't say anything.
Understood, but if any, we'll be sending that out if you have any communications, written, verbal, whatever, that have occurred regarding, well, I'll send it to you, and if anybody, please respond and say you don't have anything, okay? You have nothing. Search your emails, your... If you have nothing, search your emails, your notes or whatever. If you have something, please forward it immediately. If you don't have something, please notify me. So I have a record.
You need a formal statement.
I need a formal statement, I need a record, okay? That you have or you do not have anything. And so if you could, as quickly as possible, so we can, we can en masse this. 'Cause we're getting these on a regular basis. So, that's, that's it for my question, so that's it.
Okay. Phil, do you have any comments?
Uh, one or two. One is, not as a selectman and not as a board, as myself personally, I would like to commend this board for the hard work that they did and have done for, I don't know how many years on the, on the ordinances and stuff, trying to make changes for the better. And I think the best thing the board has done in a long time is itemize all of the changes, one by one. So if somebody don't like one, you might lose it. But when they're all grouped together, if somebody don't like one, you lose the whole deal. And that's what's been happening, I think.
Yeah, me too.
And I think the best thing you guys have done is break it all down, item by item. It's gonna take a little time at town meeting, but I think you stand a much better chance.
Yeah, we had that discussion, because if you've got two or three people that are mad about each individual item, if they're together.
Yeah, you lose the whole deal.
Yeah.
Thanks for saying that.
Thank you.
The only other comment I have is, these folks for the cottages, in my personal opinion, they have an approved plan and, and they've been approved to go ahead and do what they wanna do. I'm confused and don't quite understand why they have to keep coming back to ask to do what they've been approved to do unless they come in for a major change.
It, it was part of the original, and, and I found out tonight, 'cause I couldn't even, I, I didn't remember, that we had put a note on the plan that said when they did the community center, that they were supposed to come back in and see us. 'Cause honestly, I was, yeah, okay. And evidently, way back when, we all agreed to it.
Yeah, we all, the whole town agreed to put them cottages in.
Yep.
And I, I personally think that's one of the greatest things that's ever happened here.
I think we all, I think we all do. And I'm trying to think, think back when, because that, the motion that was made, that was in the original, that's the beginning of each, each phase. Because there was still a lot, there's, not only can the septic change, the road changes, so that means every site location of every house is gonna potentially change in each one of these. I think as we heard, that whole back area, I'm not sure there, that's going to come about right away. And that's a whole separate phase, so they'll need a whole plan anyway. So we're talking two additional trips in here, potentially. And a lot of, it was just, scale was so big. And this is the first time we've ever. Beyond the first phase, I think it was, it was more conceptual than, than concrete. So it gave them some room to not pin them down and say. Well, also the applicant, also the applicant couldn't come up with all of the funding for the project, the whole thing, and to provide the surety and everything else. But this is a way to draw to a conclusion each one and then start up and make sure that the funds are always there as well.
I'm just glad we approved the road in its entirety as a phase.
Yeah.
That would be a nightmare to have to come back every time.
No.
Okay.
Most of the changes I do.
Uh, yes?
Most of the changes I do, yeah, Rick comes to me soon as me in plan, so I have it on record and I have the number. And then I meet with these guys once a month, that's what, the little crack about I, I had the first string. We have a drawdown meeting every, every month, same time. And we sit down, we go over all the requisitions. And we have our engineer who reports and Welsh, Welsh engineering reports on what, Rick reports on what's been done and whether the requisitions fit. And then we talk about any changes and if there's any, any site changes that need to be done, Rick and I go over that beforehand, if I approve, I sign it right then and there. So, so we have a very big fast track approach that we use right now. And it's, it's just that the planning board has, because it was part of the original approval and also they're grounded, so they know, so they know what I've been doing. That I'm not out there operating while I'm within the scope, and they are too. And plus on top of that, they're gonna have to file the final. When, when they get most of those, those house amenities, well, that's really what they are, their house amenities, they're in a little, little box. They convince Rick to, to do it as a box instead of footprint, so they can float it in that. So every time they put in a new, new house, because it's a condo by, by ownership, you don't have to go back and redo the mileage every single time. So that's, that's kind of a clever thing we've done that's gonna make it easier for you guys, too. You won't be here having to re-approve milers because they moved the building from here over here. Yeah, yeah, you know, so.
Is there anything else?
And they do have a challenging site.
It's a good thing Ramin needs all that material.
They, they, they all have a little bit of leeway and do what they gotta do to.
And that, that's, that's why, that's why we did this de minimis process, like they wanna move the, the sales office because it wasn't working where it was before. So they moved it over here. It's not a problem, the circulation still works, the parking is actually better. There's better control over who comes in and out, it's a better change. But I think the plan, we did it at our scale.
Okay, is there any, anything else that we need to?
That's it.
Any other questions, Phil?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Anything from the board?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Anybody that's opposed, we're all out of here.
Good night, folks.